Good afternoon, welcome to this meeting of the Waste and Streets Scene Policy Committee. Let me... Today's meeting is considering an item that contains exempt information, and therefore, if there is any intention to discuss that, we will ask you to agree that due to the sensitivity of that information, we will have to exclude the public and press for that discussion. Can I request mobile telephones and such equipment are switched to silent mode? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Can we have introductions? Let's go this way.
councillor Paul Taupin, Green Member for Gleedless Valley.
councillor Alexi Diamond, Green spokesperson for Waste and Streets Scene Committee and councillor for Gleedless Valley.
Tim Huggan, councillor for Crooks and Crossbow Ward.
councillor Mark Jones, councillor for Burngriff Ward.
councillor Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood Ward.
councillor Janet Redler, Labour councillor for Stockbridge and up at Don.
hello, Mike Chaplin, councillor for Southie Ward and deputy chair of this committee.
councillor Beale Marlon for Park and Arbuthnot.
Thank you, and can I ask the officers on either side of me to introduce themselves as well?
thank you Chair, Sarah Bennett, Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
Rachel Marshall, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
Thank you Chair, Richard Eyre, Director of Streets and Regulation.
Thank you, I believe we're all here, so no need for apologies. Exclusion of public press, I have already mentioned that we may need to exclude the public press for item nine. Item four, declarations of interest, any declarations of interest? No, thank you. Item five, minutes of the last meeting.
Yeah, I just think on page eight, sorry, page eighteen, doesn't really reflect that I voted against the amendments D and E in the taxi, the higher licence policy, which was about changing permanently to securely and replacing operator with operators.
Sorry, Alexi, did you ask for your vote to be recorded at the time? I think is the question.
No, but we did, we did actually do.
So I think, I think the procedure is that you can ask for your vote to be recorded, but if you don't, then it isn't. Is that, is that correct?
Good, well, I think resolved unanimously is a bit misleading.
Oh, that's fair, that's a fair point, yes, that's, that can be, that can be corrected. Thank you. Any other, any other points at the minute? Okay, thank you. Next item, work programme, sorry, Mike.
Thank, thank you Chair. In view of the fact that we've had two papers arrive late for this meeting today, and certainly one of them, particularly item nine, has a lot of information in it, some of it is commercially confidential, I'm going to ask formally that we do not take this paper today. And I would ask for a vote on it if, if people wish that to happen.
Right. I mean, we've, we've not reached item nine yet, I think that'd be the point to defer when we get there, but can we, can we have some advice on, on the, on that, Sarah? I don't know if... Yeah, so, so my understanding is, yes, there's been some sort of confusion over the papers, but they were distributed by Friday, which is obviously, it's not, it's not eight days. My concern is that we've, we have Amy here to answer to us for their, for their performance and their plans for improvement, and not to do that would seem to be a wasted opportunity, seeing as, seeing as they've come in, where they might, we might not get so many of them if we invite them back next time. I mean, I, I recognise your concerns over the paper, but if you look at the recommendations, you know, do you have concerns over each of the recommendations we've been asked to consider?
I do have, and our group would vote accordingly if, if we do press ahead. But I, I think there, there is a principle here, that these papers did arrive late, and although they may have left someone's laptop on Friday, it was clear that my, myself, I actually had my item nine agenda papers arrive via a different source. And so right up until yesterday evening, neither, none of my Labour Party colleagues on this committee had received their, their papers for item nine. Which I, I think, you know, leaving, leaving us less than 24 hours, it, it's not, it's not fair on committee members.
I, I, no, I quite understand, Mike, I mean, can I say, I mean, the purpose of this, us receiving this paper is, is for an accountability session for, for Amy in terms of the service they're delivering to us. Now, that seems to me to be a useful thing for us to do, whatever decision we might make at the end of it, is that not, is that, is that not something you wish to see? Do you not wish to see us holding them to account at today's meeting?
Chair, of course, of course I wish to, to see Amy being, being held, held to account. But it, it is that, that problem with having the paper documentation in time, which can help us form questions and, and comments, and effective ways to hold them to account that I'm taking issue with.
Appreciate that, any more views from the committee on this, on this point?
I think we have discussed this a bit in the, the pre-meeting, and I think while Amy are here, it'd be really good to have them to speak to the, to the report and just do the bits that we can do now. Yeah, proceed on that basis.
Okay, well, thank you, I mean, I think we can, we can, we can hold them to account, and then we can discuss what we do with the recommendations, I think, as a, as a, as a separate piece, given that we obviously, I appreciate that thing. Do you still want to press this for a vote, Mike, at this point? Oh, Paul, yeah?
So I am with Mike on this, I, I only looked at this, the private pack today, and wasn't aware of it until it was pointed out to me by Alexi. It's going to take some explaining as well, it's not, it's not straight, it's not obvious straight away, is it, when you look at the, what's the, you know, it's, I would like to see the presentation, but I, I also feel that we're going to need to have a bit more further scrutiny of, of, on, on the service, to be honest, like, you know, I mean, there's things, there's graphs where the figures make no sense.
Well, can I suggest then that we, we take the presentation in the slot on the agenda, and then when we've had the presentation, or we've asked our questions, we then consider, you know, what to do with the report, whether to defer it or, or to take it? Would that be acceptable, Mike?
Thank you Chair, we'll, we'll accept that position.
Thank you, right, so moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's the work programme. Rachel.
Sorry Chair, I couldn't figure out the, the numbering there on the pages. So the work programme is set out from pages 21 of the agenda pack, which I'm just leafing through, do you want to...
Yes, Mark, do you want to come in?
Considering the discussion we've just had about the later item in the agenda, moving to the work programme at this stage feels inappropriate, because the implications of what comes out of that work programme, out of that session, may have a direct impact on this work programme, so can we defer this to after that item? Just to be awkward, and I do...
Yeah, impeccable, impeccable awkwardness there, Mark, yes. We can do that, I'm sure, does it, I'm not sure it really matters, to be honest.
We, we can take that later Chair, if you want to, yeah, if, depending obviously of the outcome of the discussion later, if that wants to be deferred.
Very well, let's, let's defer the work programme till later in the meeting, so the next item is the grass verge options, including wildflowers, flowers and community-funded street trees. Can we have that report, please?
Hello Chair, committee members.
Hi, hi Jill, can you introduce yourselves, you, you sat two chairs down from your, your name sign, so...
Am I all right here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or somewhere over there? Sorry, hello, my name is Gillian Chars, I'm head of Waste Management and Head of Highways Maintenance. Paper's obviously not quite big enough. So I'm here today to talk about the verges and community street tree policy, and I'm presenting on behalf of one of my colleagues who's on holiday. Chair, I need to ask for this report to be deferred, so another item for the work programme, councillor Mark Jones. Unfortunately, we haven't documented the full equalities impact assessment, whilst we have taken note of the key characteristics of, of the nine key characteristics in our equalities impact assessment in developing the policy, we haven't fully documented it as an EIA, so I don't think you can take the recommendation to approve the report until we can document that fully.
Right, okay, I mean, the, the report says it has been done and there's a tick, and so, I mean...
There's been an issue between the two teams, so my own team with staff being unwell, and holiday within the equalities impact assessment, so it hasn't been fully agreed between the two, so I wasn't able to bring it here today.
Right, and, and can you enlighten us to what issues there are in terms of, I mean, is this a sign that there are some equalities issues that, that we need to consider? Or is it just a, you know, a technical problem?
Within the policy report itself, and within our recommendations, you'll note that we make recommendations and approvals around ensuring safe lines of sight, making sure that the highway remains accessible for all users, so that is people who might be using a wheelchair, or assisting somebody who might be using a wheelchair, but equally people who are using buggies, prams, any sort of mobility aid, people with low levels of sight, making sure that there aren't additional hazards placed on the highway. So the, the policy highlights what interventions we will make, and the equalities impact assessment identifies those individually, so it, it is a technical piece, but it needs to be there to validate that whole policy, and it's right that it's presented to you together, and I'm, I'm sorry, it's just a matter of time in part, in the run-up to Christmas.
Right, well, I think, I think obviously we need to consider those issues, so we, we don't really have a choice, I don't think, at this point, but to, to accept that proposal, to defer. Is the committee agreed on that, on that point?
Chair, it looks like deferring the work programme was a smart move.
Right, well, I mean, I hope, I hope when it does come back, we can see the equality impact assessment that's caused us all so much trouble, because, because obviously the points raised are things that we need to consider in the round as part of the, part of the decision, so I look forward to seeing that presented with the paper next time. Alexi?
You were talking about that you haven't done the impact assessment around hazardous things on the highway, is this relating to certain aspects in particular, as in the street furniture that the public can put on? And are you also, were you also considering that impact assessment, that vehicles are actually hazardous to people, pedestrians, people using buggies, people using, so when they're blocking the footpath or grass verges as well, that is also an accessibility issue? So it's not just the, the street furniture, but it's actually people parking on the grass verges as well?
Yes, entirely that, but we need to ensure that the measures that we identify as sort of like localised solutions to prevent parking, don't create a further hazard for highway users, so people who might have low levels of, of eyesight, or people who have mobility issues, or if they are presented, that we will remove them, because they're not safe. So that's what the policy outlines, and we just need to fully document that through the EIA process.
Tim?
I was going to say, without a robust policy in place, a lot of people, I know, particularly my ward, seem to be taking matters in their own hands on how they deal with verges, and planters and things like that, to make sure that the verges remain, that, you know, become an attractive place, but also stop parking on the verges when it's, when they're not needed, where it's some sort of mud, you know, that people are looking at day after day. And if we, you know, when we do get a, a robust policy in place, then we can actually play our bit on biodiversity etcetera as well, as part, as part of that.
Chair, just to, to say, yes, that, that is, the, the policy's been provided, so you've got that now, and the idea is to have a range of flexible solutions that meet different local community needs, but with the overriding element of safety to all highway users, and where we might need to step in to ensure that is carried through.
Thank you, I, I mean, I don't see, I, I don't, I'm not seeing any more hands in anything, and I don't think we need to particularly discuss this much longer if we are, if we are deferring. Sorry Barbara, you've come in specially to talk about this. You know, obviously, I hope we, I hope we can just consider this at the next meeting. Clearly, the, the, the impact on, on road users, particularly with, in terms of visibility and so on, is, is, has to be considered not only as part of the policy, but also as part of the individual schemes, and I guess the policy will, will talk about how that, how that will be done, so that, so, you know, we will, we need that assessment, and it's not the end, it's not the end of the story in terms of considering equality, so let's hope we, let's hope we can do that and get that, get that piece of work done. All right, thank you Gillian, now, in my enthusiasm and haste, I skipped over public questions, so can we just go back to item six, public questions, petitions, I believe we have one public question, which Rachel will read.
Thank you Chair. The question is as follows. As we made clear to councillor and Chair of the committee, Joe Otten, when we visited him indoor, and when we, when he visited us in Darnall, the rubbish and fly tipping problem in Darnall is out of control and desperately needs addressing by the council. While the community makes great effort with initiatives such as community litter picking, the problem is now far beyond these efforts, and as Joe recognised, help from the council is sorely needed. Specifically, much of the fly tipping is caused by the fact that there is no dumping areas or skips in Darnall, leaving little option for those who cannot afford a lengthy car journey. There is also a clear shortage of bins, both on main roads in which are overflowing bins, or a regular site, and on the back streets of Darnall, in which there are barely any bins at all. Thus, our question to the committee is this: will they consider implementing our demands which we feel are desperately needed? Eight new skips around Darnall. Bin collection increased to at least once a week. More public bins across Darnall. Area-wide clean-up days twice per month. Fly tipping warning signs in various languages. A full demand letter has been given to councillor and Chair, Joe Otten. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, so I'm, my laptop has now gone dead, I have an answer prepared. I, I would say that, obviously, I, I, I met this group, as, as they said, and they were very, I think they were very impressive in terms of the, you know, the, the work they were doing in their community, and the passion they had to make, make Darnall a better place to live, a cleaner and safer place. So I have an answer in terms of the, from, from the service that I can read out. The, obviously, the, the headline demands for, for, for increase in services, new skips, more bin collections and so on, that is, I, I think that is not in our gift in terms of, in terms of the, the budget to do that, but, you know, I, I think the, the intent is noted, and the question is what we can do, I think, to, to address the problem, but let me, let me read the answer. In respect of a question on increased provision of bins, collections and skips in the area for waste removal, we will follow on that with a written answer in the new year, as we need to retrieve and collate some information on current bin usage and fly tipping incidents in the area before answering fully. A number of fly tipping hotspots in Darnall have been reviewed this year in conjunction with councillors, and proposals, proposals are being costed to install deterrent measures this financial year. There is up to 57,000 to spend on protecting these in the East Lac. We also have more than 10 of the latest mobile CCTV cameras being used in hotspots across the city to catch people fly tipping predominantly from cars, where a vehicle registration can be identified, and more than 100 FPNs have been served as a result since these went in. The East Lac produced a waste information leaflet that councillors and council staff delivered to 600 properties in the Darnall area as part of their day of action on litter. Leaflets are provided in community settings, libraries, schools etcetera, there are alternative waste options for people with no access to transport. The Lac Chair, councillor Mary Lee, and the Lac Manager, visited High Hazel's Academy Head Teacher, and met with around 50 parents living in Darnall, to listen to the parents talk about litter and the importance of reporting fly tipping and preventive measures. The Lac are working with a business adviser for Darnall, who has met with local businesses, and they're working putting on an Economic Recovery Fund bid together, some of this money will if successful be used on keep Darnall tidy campaign and lots more. There is an East Lac Environment, Highways and Transport Working Group that councillors here and as chairs, Sanford Road is mentioned regularly, they have had a quote from SEC contract officers on how much it would cost for more frequent road sweeps on Sanford Road and some of the side roads, ward councillors will be discussing if local Lac money can be used to fund the extra road sweeps. Councillor Mary Lee and other relevant officers, e.g. housing, have had other more targeted walkabouts, most recent was on the Greenland estate. In September, SEC delivered a bin collection calendar to all houses in Darnall, as well as explaining how to use the bin services, it also sets out other waste services available, including bulky waste collections and HWRCs. The leaflet also provides a web link and QR code to help and prompt residents to report litter fly tipping issues. We hope this will reduce fly tipping as people understand better the waste collection services. In April, following specific complaints, SEC officers recorded and actioned waste issues observed along sections of Main Road and Sanford Road, this included addressing a small number of missing overloaded and contaminated bins, as well as arranging duty of care visits to address some trade waste concerns. On a general note, we take robust enforcement action where there is fly tipping if there is evidence, and we work with lots of businesses, read their trade waste. We have a Slovak language waste video which is available, there's a hyperlink in this email, I get, this will be in council records, so hopefully that hyperlink will translate through to that if you're, if you look at the papers. And also Slovak language leaflet which provides information regarding bin collections and bulky waste, although developed in conjunction with Page Hall team for the Page Hall area. Information is relevant for Slovak speakers living in other areas of Sheffield, the English version is also available. Although where possible, we look to use pictorial materials to deliver, deliver waste messages, if the language is identified as an issue, if the communities group has specific languages in mind, we can produce other translated videos, other materials, that, that there is a cost to this. And then, I don't know how much more of this we want to go into, it talks about the food waste trial we had, which we, we also ran in Darnall, and that also involves specific comms. And, yeah, I, I think I will stop there, it's very, I know we have 30 minutes for this. Mark, you wanted to come in?
Chair, I'd like to raise issue with one of the later points that you said there. Having, officers will be aware of the issues we've been facing within my own ward, the fact that it singled out the Slovak community as being responsible for fly tipping, effectively in the wording, whether intended or otherwise, feels somewhat disproportionate and unjust, unjust, certainly considering the evidence we've had from areas similarly. So I, I would be cautious as to some of the wording of that answer, if at all possible, and I do know that officers have done an amazing amount of work in terms of the pictorial element. There are people from many communities who are unfortunately illiterate in more than one language, and barely literate in English, so you could put a leaflet out there in multiple languages, it wouldn't necessarily help me, you put out a pictorial leaflet, I might understand it. But I, I'd always be cautious, and, and I just really want to kind of really highlight that one point which, which made them become a focal point for some to blame others for their own activities, Chair.
Thank you, thank you Mark, the point is very well made, I mean, I, I, yes, I hope people don't read into the, to the point that that particular translation has been made available, certainly the, the request from Acorn is, you know, multiple languages so that everybody can, can, can get the message. I would like to add, obviously, I've met with, I've met with this group, they were, they were very impressive in their passion for their, for their area. We are planning a further meeting between Waste and Streets Scene and East Lac councillors and officers in order to progress. Progress, I think, trying to find ways, you know, the, the, many of the asks that are made are probably impractical, but I think there are, there will be things we can do if we can be a bit, a bit smarter and more creative about it, and we, you know, recognition, when, when I went to visit them, I parked on the next street and I passed two mattresses on my way from, from where I parked to the, to, to the meeting room, so, you know, I, you know, that was enough to convince me that they, they have a particular issue there. Right, can we move on from that? So the next item is the Amy performance review. So, again, just, just a reminder that there is closed information in the appendix, if you wish to discuss or mention any of that, we will have to close the meeting. But can I ask, is it, Gillian, are you presenting this? Yeah, do you want to present this, and then perhaps we'll have the Amy people up to answer questions as well? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, yes, so I'll do an outline of the report that you've all had, appreciate we've had some comments about the time to digest that. And my colleagues from Amy are here to present some slides, because some of what we're talking about is easier to describe by showing you. And so there's the opportunity to, to quiz Amy on that, as, as a people who deliver in the city for you. So in terms of the report, we've outlined the context of the Amy contract, I'm very conscious it's the first time we've brought the Amy contract to committee, and we have a range of very experienced members who may have been on the council at the time when the contract was awarded, but equally, we have newer members who, who might not have that back catalogue. So section 1.1 outlines the background of the contract award, why we sought the PFI and the multi-billion pound investment it brought into the city, how it's brought our highway infrastructure up to standard, including road and footpath surfacing, but we've also had an incredible investment in low energy and highly controllable street lighting, new traffic signals, and the rest of the street scene infrastructure. In appendix one, there's a graphic that gives some scale to that range and volume of assets that are under the scope of the contract, and I think that's a really important thing for us to, to understand in terms of the scale of the delivery by Amy for us. There's a core investment period in the contract, that was about bringing the assets up standard, and, and the incentive to do that right was then backed up by the ongoing maintenance and an ongoing delivery of the, the street scene and public realm through the contract for the remaining period, up to 2037. We've also, it got a diagram in appendix one about how PFI works, because the, the council's actually in contract, not directly with Amy, it is subcontracted to Amy, it is a different body that holds the contract. Got representatives of both here today for you to be able to, to talk to them and ask any questions as you may wish. And it's, it's that contracting body that holds the relationship with the funders, because ultimately it's private funds that, that have secured this investment for Sheffield. So that's the back, background and the context of why we went into the contract, Sheffield was known as pothole city in the, in the late 2000s, and that's why the council sought this investment through PFI, to bring that, that increase in our standards to the city. So section 1.2, I've then tried to cover the depth of the scale and scope of the delivery, again, conscious it's the first time I've been here, so I'm sorry, there are a great number of appendices that accompany that, because that's about sharing with you as a committee and ensuring our customers and the public know how much is being delivered on a day-to-day basis, what that means in terms of local delivery, so we've included the local area committee reports, how the provision varies actually on the local area committee, I just picked out one fact, that, that we have 238 grid bins in the South Lac, South East Lac, sorry, and more than double that in, at 555 in the North Lac, you know, because that reflects that, that need. And, and there will be other variations in those Lac reports based on those local needs. We've also done much work to provide transparency and oversight to the contract, I don't really want to mention the trees word, but we all know where we have been in terms of trees, and the council's come a long way in ensuring that there is more transparency around the delivery of this contract, and that's very much what we're here to do today, you know, we're here to explain the full scope of the contract and that day-to-day... we're here to explain the full scope of the contract and that day-to-day delivery. That said, I know you guys know your areas and you're very passionate ward members. I'm sure you would be able to give me a list of things that maybe aren't quite as you'd like on Street Scene in your ward. And I'm not here to say everything is perfect. I just want to give you a scale of what we are doing on a day-to-day basis. The contract is both cyclical and responsive, so there are programme maintenance and there's programmes to ensure we are delivering and there's programmes to replace and repair. But there's also reactive element, which relies on you, our customers, anybody who's in our public realm contacting us and saying, this isn't right. And there are a whole load of contract requirements that govern both elements of that, so both the cyclical operation and that responsive element. As part of our commitment to ensuring people understand what we deliver as part of this contract, we are proposing a new customer charter. We have also embedded some key performance indicators from Waste in that, which is another contract, the Veolia contract. But from our customers' eyes, it's that visibility of on the street scene, and we all know Waste will make a big impact on that. So I think it's right that we put those together. And that customer charter is a collection of sort of K P Is from both the Veolia and Amy contract, where people can see what we deliver and what you can expect from these contracts that are delivered for the council. So moving on to Section 1.3, we have got a specific performance issue with surfacing this year. And as this is a performance update on the Amy contract, we've brought that to your attention. And I've gone in to explain what the basis of that requirement is. So we don't have, I want to explain to you that we don't have a failing network in Sheffield. We have an issue with contract compliance at the moment, and that's what this explains. So the contract requires that Amy survey all of our roads every two years. The survey techniques are used pretty much nationally across all local authorities, and that data set is compiled by the D F T and published. So we have a really good benchmark of what our performance is in Sheffield and how we compare. And if you look at the strategic K P I pack in the appendices, you will see we've lifted that data for you, so you can see directly how we compare with other local authorities. And we've also included some key statistics here that we are in the top sort of twenty and twenty-five local authorities in the country in terms of our road surface condition. So we need to be clear that there was never a requirement from this contract to resurface every road. That is a myth about the contract. The requirement is to have the roads at a certain score. Where they don't achieve that score, they need to be surfaced. And that's what we've had an issue with this year in terms of Amy's delivery. In addition to that, Section 1.4 also explains there are other current performance challenges on the contract. So again, if you look at the strategic K P I deck, you'll see we have some graphs explaining the cyclical cleansing of gullies. And actually, our performance looks really, really good on that and has been within the forecast and the cycle that we aim to achieve. However, we have got an issue where when an issue is recorded from that cyclical bit, where they need to go back and do some further work, Amy haven't been keeping pace with that return piece. So it's an example of that cyclical and reactive piece. The cyclical work has gone very well on the gullies, but when they've attended, they are required to note any other problems, and they've not been meeting the timescales in terms of that reactive piece. We have had issues also in terms of cleansing standards. And the issues we've had with the surfacing, particularly on footways, highlighted that. So there are footways that connect parts of the city, sorry, I'm not explaining that very well, estates in the city. So then I'm not necessarily talking about footpaths on the side of the road. I'm talking about footpaths through estates, generals if you like, snickets depending on where from, those sorts of things, and across housing land, parks land, that actually fall under the highways contract. We've identified that they, on some occasions, aren't meeting the contract standard or sections of them aren't. And Amy have got some slides and we'll talk to you about that. They've now secured additional resource to bring those up to standard. But in the meantime, we've also deployed that resource on our key gateways to provide additional cleanse and get those up to standard. We have an improvement plan in place for the surfacing works, and Amy are targeted to achieve contract compliance by the end of the year. So those elements are covered within the key strategic dashboard piece for you. In terms of the next section, Section Two, how does this contribute? So the Sheffield Delivery Plan includes a commitment to our street and neighbourhood environment. And an urgent challenge piece has been picked out about the Amy performance delivery and ensuring resident satisfaction returns to improving because it has now plateaued. So it is part of our Sheffield Delivery Plan to improve that performance. And the new customer charter hopefully is a way of doing that, improving people's understanding of what the contract delivers and what to expect from us, and being able to convey how we perform in that respect. In addition, the local area committee reports providing is that really localised information on what impact is in your area. In terms of consultation, we've been subject to the National Highways and Transport Network annual survey since the contract started in twenty twelve. So we've got a really good benchmark of how we perform. It is a survey we buy in, so not all councils choose to do this. It covers a broad church. It's not just highway maintenance. It also tests attitude to transport generally, things like bus use and public transport use and general perceptions. So we do have a good benchmark on that, and that's where I said that the satisfaction had started to plateau. We are keen to explore more why that might be happening. So we have developed a new customer satisfaction survey on the Sheffield Citizenspace platform, and the intention is that we will operate that each year, and that will focus solely on highway maintenance. You may recall we do something like that for Waste anyway. So customers can go in at any time and give feedback on how they think we are performing. We will leave it open for a year, close it, and agree any key improvements from that with Amy that we can focus on. So that launched in October, and to date we've had over five hundred responses, so a good start. In terms of the quality impact assessment, because there are no policy changes proposed in the report, it was agreed we didn't need to do a full quality impact assessment. However, we do note that because we've had increased surfacing works across the city, there are impacts to people who use the network. And again, people with mobility issues may be adversely affected by that. Financial, commercial implications and legal implications are largely contained within the close section of the report if we wish to discuss those. Climate implications, again, as there are no changes proposed to policy or service delivery, there's no new climate impact assessment. We've also got within the key performance information pack Amy's headline carbon performance measure and their commitment to reducing that and their vehicle emissions as part of the CAS monitoring that the council is doing with Amy. So in terms of recommendations, we've set out four recommendations for committee. That is to note the details of the performance update. So that's the various appendices that you have in front of you. Note the Street Scene and Waste Customer Charter, improving the information we provide. And hopefully if you can prove that, we will move to publish that. Agree the action set out in the report, which is for officers to continue with our delegation of tracking the delivery of the improvement plan against contract compliance, and receive a further update on Amy's performance in six months' time. Do you want me to pause and take questions, or would you like Pete to do the slides from Amy?
Right, I did see, I did see one hand. Mark, is this a question to Jill rather than to Amy?
It's probably more than Amy's question.
Right.
I would be interested.
Okay, shall we, shall we move on to the slides then? If you'd like to, if you'd like to come to the desks. We've only put out four chairs. I don't know if you want to all want to crowd round or... If you can use the mic and introduce yourselves before you start, thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you, committee, for the invitation to come here today to present yourself. Listening to the challenge early on about being ready for us and not wanting to bring us back in the future, I'll just say that if there's any future requirements for us to come back, we'd be more than happy to come where you can hold us to account. So, you know, that is welcome. I'll start with some introductions. Start with Peter Banfield to my left. Peter is the Business Director for Amy, who's dedicated to the Sheffield Street Ahead contract. Peter's a very experienced business director, and he is, as I say, dedicated to this contract. My name's Andy Denman. I'm the Sector Director for Amy's Highways and Waste Collections business. I'm a chartered civil engineer. I'm a member of the Institute of Civil Engineers as a fellow. I've been in this industry for about twenty-five years. I've been with Amy for two years, so I haven't got the wealth of knowledge of this contract that many people in this room will have with a history, but I am quite close to it and got very close to it over the last two years since I've been employed by Amy. Amy's service for highways, we're probably the single biggest highway provider in the UK, so we've got a huge amount of experience and breadth in knowledge how to deliver contracts of this nature. We also have a consulting business which actually supports this portfolio amongst our others. I know that big isn't always best, but I just want to highlight the breadth of capability that we've got and we draw upon for Sheffield. So we'll move on to the presentation. If I can start by explaining what we want to cover today or what we intended to cover. So I'll start by talking about the contract scope, what's included. We've heard some of it from Gillian, but I think what's also important to understand is what's excluded from it, because that often creates frustrations when there's perhaps a lack of understanding what is in and what is outside the Streets Ahead contract. I'll then talk about the life cycle improvement plan and perhaps just try and explain why we need an improvement plan and the background behind that, because I think that can get quite lost in translation and appreciate the papers, probably quite complicated and quite challenging to understand. So I'll try and articulate that as clearly as possible. I'll then hand over to Peter, who's got some more detail on the types of defects that we're facing and the reason why. Peter will also give some comparison of the Sheffield streets in comparison to the industry. And then to make it real for everybody in the room, we've got some examples of the types of defects that we're referring to with some photographs, which just brings it down to what's actually important for everybody here instead of graphs and data, actually the service we deliver on the frontline. So the contract scope, I'm not going to talk through the amount of assets. You've got that in the pack. But Amy is responsible for the highways service and anything within the highways. That includes the asset management approach, deciding what intervention happens when and where. However, I want to put a caveat there that the specification that we run to and the contract is quite prescriptive, and we don't have free rein to go and do what we choose to do. We do it within the contract and we seek approval from Sheffield before we do anything. So I just think that's important to highlight. The lists of assets that we look after are defined on the screen. Gillian went into quite a lot of detail about the type of maintenance we do from the core investment programme, which was the original investment, right away through to maintenance, reactive maintenance, responsive maintenance, cyclic maintenance. And what's quite important this time of year is the winter maintenance. So you can see the scope of what we do there. But I think it's important to highlight that we don't cover everything. We don't cover things that's in private land. That includes retail. And often, you know, we're drawn into dealing with retail parks that, quite frankly, are outside the contract, and we don't have the ability to intervene because it's outside of our remit. We also don't cover the parks and countryside, and that often causes some frustration where, you know, verges, as seen on this slide, grounds and soft estate does come in our remit, but parks and countryside doesn't. We don't have any control over utilities and statutory undertakers. So again, you know, that can cause a lot of frustration in the city, but that's outside of our authority to actually intervene for utilities. So I think it's worth just highlighting that. An area that we do support on, and I think where we see added value from ourselves, is the non-core work. So this is largely new schemes, largely mobility schemes, things for like buses, cycleways, et cetera. That's where we draw in our consultancy service and our operational expertise to actually deliver an end-to-end service for installing new infrastructure. I think Gillian mentioned some of these in her presentation, but you can see we've spent significant investment on the infrastructure in Sheffield since the contract commenced. Nine hundred miles of carriageway, nearly eighteen hundred miles of footway resurfacing. So that's a substantial amount in a city. First city to be fully LED illuminated. You know, that is something we should all be proud of, has significant impact both on the quality of the lighting, but also on the carbon reduction associated with the use of LEDs. Significant investment on structures and also traffic signals, using latest technology and the traffic signals infrastructure. So this slide is in the slide deck, and I'm not going to read it, but I'll try and articulate what it's actually saying. I'll start by trying to explain why we need a life cycle improvement plan. When the contract started, we had a core investment period, and that's where we spent a huge amount on new infrastructure, so resurfacing new roads. And the approach that was adopted at that time was to resurface full streets rather than do patchwork resurfacing. There are numerous reasons for that. Largely, that gives best value, but it also minimises disruption to the public. So that full-street approach carried on beyond the core investment programme. And what Amy's been doing is resurfacing full streets beyond there. So we were actually doing, instead of just the sections that failed, the full street, which sometimes the full street didn't necessarily need doing, but we knew at some point in the future it would be. So as a result of that, between the streets that we've surfaced, there have been sections that failed that we haven't surfaced. So we've surfaced more than was ever envisaged, but we have missed the bits between the streets that we have surfaced. And that's the reason that there is a larger number of defects out there. Now, last December, we put together the annual plan for works that we would be doing in twenty twenty-two, and the authority picked up that there's a huge amount of defects between the streets we're resurfacing, and they rejected our plan, rejected it in March. We were geared up in March to actually continue with that plan, but we stopped things there and then because the plan was rejected. And we revised the plan and we submitted a new plan to the authority, which would make us contract compliant. That plan has since been accepted, and that's what we're working on now. At that time, to catch up with the level of defects that are identified out there, we pulled together an improvement plan, and that's what Gillian's been referring to. That improvement plan commenced straight away, and since, from April to now, in the eight months, we've tackled eighty percent of those defects that were causing us a problem. So we've made significant headway on addressing the defects that are out there. That brings us to the position where we are here today with the authority. So if I now pass over to Peter, and Peter can talk a bit more detail about the defects.
Thank you, Andy. So what you're seeing on screen here is just a record of the level of those defects that were deemed non-compliant to the contract. So on the left-hand side, a pie chart of the carriageway defects relating to the contract year, two hundred and twenty thousand square metres, and the right-hand side for footways, three hundred and fifty-four thousand square metres. So those combined represented circa two percent of the whole Sheffield network, just to put some perspective on what we're talking here in terms of sections and areas of network that were deemed as not compliant within the contract. So as Andy mentioned there, that all of those areas were considered within the improvement plan. There were, however, a small number of exceptions agreed with Sheffield Council, and we'll come on to that in a couple of later slides, some examples of what those exceptions are. Due to the whole-street approach that Andy mentioned, the Sheffield network has actually had around a million square metres of additional surfacing delivered in the ten years to date. And that's because of that whole-street approach that we continued from. And that's because of that whole street approach that we continued from CIP. So when we've looked at the statistics, we've actually seen that we've laid a lot more surfacing materials on the network than would have been otherwise driven by the contract. So we've done the work, but we've kind of done it out of sequence to the contract. So the level of defects that we have, if you put that in perspective to other areas of the network that we've improved. The Sheffield network though is significantly better standard than most other local authorities and that's due to the initial capital investment in the first five years of the contract. But the contract does demand a high level of maintenance going forward to meet that contract compliance. So we'll come on to some aspects of that as well. This slide here compares the Sheffield network to the national average. So every year, Department of Transport survey the whole of the UK. And what you can see on the three graphs is the blue line represents the English national average of carriageway condition. And you can see the orange line represents the specific data from Department of Transport for Sheffield network. So on A roads, B roads, C roads and unclassified roads, you can see from around 2014, when the data was started being recorded and the capital investment programme brought the condition significantly downwards, well below the national average and maintains a level continually below that national average for all types of network roads. The left-hand scale on the graphs just represents the percentage of roads where treatment should be considered. So that's what we're comparing against here, that circa 5% of national roads need intervention in other local authorities, but in Sheffield, it's around 1%. And that is our, that is picked up in our annual surveys and that becomes our work programme for the year to maintain compliance. So these graphs are, as I say, well documented, comparisons against national standards, but you can see that the Sheffield network performs very good against those national examples. Just to put some of this in perspective, the examples I'm showing here, on the left-hand side of Healybank Road, for example, a scheme that was surveyed back in December 2021 showed that the left-hand side of the carriageway was failing against the contract data. But on the right-hand side, you can see visible signs of deterioration, but that wasn't recorded as a contract fail. So these are some examples of the elements that we needed to do to become compliant. And that road was actually resurfaced in April this year. But onsite, you can actually see a difference in the levels of defects really. It doesn't mean to say that we're not doing that because it's required. That means that the condition data doesn't flag that as a fail. Another example, Effingham Street, this was flagged as a failure, a structural failure to the right-hand side carriageway there. This was surveyed in 2020 and it has been resurfaced in September of this year. But you can also see on the left-hand side, a similar, what appears to be a similar level of defect, but that's not failed in the survey from 2020. And that is due to the overall length of that defect. So that's how the condition scoring in the contract drives the work programme. On the right-hand side, you can see it's more extensive in area. On the left-hand side, there's one significant area that's deteriorated, but it's not sufficient size that drives the contract to do that. So the right-hand side of that carriageway would have been treated in this catch-up programme. Another example there, that's actually showing the same shots. You can see the traffic signals in the background. But again, the work done on the right addresses the failure to the contract and the level of deterioration, but there are signs elsewhere, but not sufficient to drive a failure and a remedy treatment. I mentioned before that of those square metres of defective work that were flagged on the pie charts, there are actually some fairly legitimate areas that the contract would drive it to be flagged as a fail, but actually there's no issues with the elements themselves. So there are various surveys undertaken, whether that's a ride quality survey, which would pick up defamation or rutting. Often you get false reading from the machinery around tight radius or roundabouts. So the example on the left would have failed a ride survey, but actually the surfacing quality is acceptable. The middle photograph shows a patch failure and purely down to the size of patch as recorded is below the patch requirement stated in the contract. But there's nothing, there's no issues with the quality of that patch in terms of its serviceability. And likewise, on the right-hand side there, another classification of edge failure. For example, that was a new development work, the developer did that work because they've done a reinstatement to the new curb. That flags as a fail in our contract, but the quality of that work is acceptable. So there are examples of that nature that were agreed, that were taken out of scope, if you like, for that default position. So examples of footway defects, all those pictures there that you see actually failed the data from the surveys. And on the face of it, those look quite good, but that's the level of trigger that can be made in the contract there, down to an aesthetic failure due to some minor visible aggregate loss in the surfacing. So those would have gone in the programme this year for rectification, which would have included another resurfacing basically. But some examples are just showing a lot of that square area that was in the defects. That was some of the standard of what you see in there and did require a treatment. Again, some examples also may have failed due to visible moss, grass or overgrown vegetation and was just purely a cleansing issue as opposed to a resurfacing issue. So those have been addressed also. But it's important to note that approximately 50%, sorry, 50% of all that square area on the previous slides related to cleansing remedies on footway. So you can see some examples there of just very minor moss or growth on footways that actually was remedied via a cleansing process as opposed to a resurfacing process. And it's to say that's how stringent the contract is in terms of the scoring mechanisms that trigger, they actually trigger larger square metre areas. So an example might be you've got a three-metre section of moss, but it would trigger a 25% area fail of the whole footway. So those figures in square metre terms are actually exaggerated to the actual defect that's on the ground. I think that was, that's the last one.
Thank you for that. So questions, Mark, do you still, do you have a question still?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Obviously, the majority of the presentation that we've had here today is focusing mostly on the hard elements of the contract, the roads and pavements and such like. So for me, a lot of my questions around the Amy contract are of relevance, pertinent to the thing from Acorn in terms of litter removal and such like. But for now, I'll stick to the physical elements of this. So the contract's still got another 14 years, 15 years to go, 15, isn't it? One of the things that we constantly hear from our constituents is when interventions are being done, the workmen on there, sometimes they are Amy directly employed or they may be contractors. And sometimes it feels that the contractors do not do Amy or the councillor's service at times in so much that where you've done the surface dressing, for instance, I've been out with officers in the past and some of that surface dressing looks fine and some of it looks slapdash. And then having to go back to the constituents and trying to explain why it looks terrible and the excuse that it'll weather in is a hard sell. So part of the thing I want to understand here now is, how are you investing in your workforce to make sure that you don't need to use those contractors, that you're encouraging lots of Sheffield lads and lasses to come and work for you? How are you going to make, because you've got a 15-year contract still, there's going to be a massive development of workforce, apprenticeship levies, how are you using that? How are you going to bring that on and learn from your experiences so far to make sure that you have people in job who know the roads? Not just coming in to do an engineering, physical intervention, but know the roads, know the changing traffic flow? We've seen lots of cracking, that mosaic in a pavement of roads where the substructure's collapsing. How much of that is due to different vehicles using that, heavier vehicles using those roads now? And actually, have you got the intelligence within your organisation to see those changes, those patterns, so you're not keeping to having to do interventions, reactive interventions which are expensive as opposed to the cyclical interventions that you can budget for and carry forwards? So there's quite a lot in there to unpick because it's quite a complex area in there. But certainly, if you could maybe highlight some of those elements about what you're going to do for the apprenticeship levies going forward, what you've learned. And specifically, Gillian did mention the great clearing. So if you went to places like Northern General, you're not going to get to clear the grids and collies during the week because there's lots of appointments at the hospital and such like. And you already know that, so you'll attempt to do it on a Saturday. We know the stresses on the NHS means that Saturdays you can't get access to the roads either. Is there anything from those experiences where you're learning to move, voluntarily move your services to maybe do Sundays? And also to make sure you integrate with the lag so that we can make sure that our constituents know when not to be parked on the road so you can get to them and such like. So there's a large element of that strategic thinking that I'd like to kind of get a feeling for where you're at on that.
So what you've just covered there probably could take on a full meeting in its own right. There's a huge amount of questions there, which I'm more than happy to have separate sessions with you to actually discuss them. But you know, if I take it from an Amy philosophy perspective and then Peter might be able to bring some examples to make it specific for Sheffield. The philosophy in which we operate is one of self-delivery where you've got sustained work. So if we can sustain a workforce at a level in Sheffield, we would rather do it ourselves than employ supply chain. The other time we use supply chain is if it's specialist equipments required or seasonal equipment and the like. But we do adopt a philosophy of self-delivery where possible for most of the frontline services. There's many merits in that, the merits of local delivery, local knowledge. You talked about the intelligence, you maintain the intelligence, you develop the skills in the local area and people have a pride in patch. Bringing in supply chain doesn't have that necessary same pride in patch. So on a philosophy approach, it's self-delivery, but we do need to maintain the resources at a fully utilised level. And where we can't do that, we'd end up subcontracting to cover the peaks and the troughs. You talked a lot about apprentices and this, I'll perhaps talk more about the wider social value piece. For us, social value is quite core to our heart. It's one of the four strategic objectives we've got as a highways and waste collections business. And social value covers quite a large number of areas, but apprenticeship, skills and developing people is one of them. I have a personal frustration that we can invest in the wrong apprentices. I want to be investing in apprentices who come from either a deprived area or a background where they would struggle to get employment. I think often the apprenticeship route is we target numbers we get. And you know, this contract was written a good number of years ago, but we have a target on this contract to bring 11 apprentices in every year. 14, sorry, 14 apprentices every year. We don't have sufficient work to keep them beyond that apprenticeship. So we keep them for the period of that apprenticeship and then we let them go and we bring another 14 in. I'd rather see a reduced number, but target apprentices from a background of it, of people who wouldn't get work if it wasn't for the likes of the apprenticeship scheme. You know, whether they're people who don't have a home life, you know, are supported by the authority and then they're released at the age of 16 or 18 into the world and they fend for themselves and they end up the wrong side of the law. Well, if we can give those people the jobs and target the apprenticeships where we have maximum value, I'd rather do that than just purely get numbers in from kids that are coming out of school with good qualifications and will find a work elsewhere. So I think there's something we should be looking at there together and I think we can do that with Sheffield. So apprenticeship, social value is something in our heart, it's our DNA. Self-delivery, that's the aspiration, but we need to recognise that we need continuity of work if we're self-delivering. You specifically talked about surface dressing and surface dressing is always a difficult activity because there is some element of embedment and sweeping. And if you, so it's not, don't really want to get too techie on this beating, but you put the bitumen down and then the stones, if you sweep up those stones straight away, you defeat the object. If you leave it too long, you have the problem with residents and the likes. So it's quite a difficult thing to get right and I can understand why it's particularly sensitive. I don't know the cases you're referring to, so I can't really comment, but I do know that surface dressing everywhere causes anxiety because of the chippings that are left on site until they actually penetrate. If you get particularly cold weather, it takes longer for it to penetrate than if you have hot weather. Sweeping too early defeats the object. But yeah, I've covered a few of your points off. Perhaps, you know, if Peter says anything specific to Sheffield, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think you've covered most of it, Andy, I'd echo the comments about the apprenticeships. I think we need to look again at that collectively. But you know, in terms of some of those treatments on the carriageway, there are preventative maintenance treatments that physically do look different to hot asphalt applied. And you know, I do understand that, having worked in the industry for a long time, know that there's a perception that those are inferior materials. They're appropriate for the design life of those materials. But nevertheless, on top of that, if we do get any defective or quality issues, it's in our own interest to flag those with our subcontractors as defects. Otherwise, Amy are left with that liability over the longevity of its life. So it's absolutely within our interest to flag any defects with our subcontractors and we will continue to do that. We have a robust procedure in place to do that and monitor quality.
Chair, can I just come in on a couple of points? So on the apprenticeships, it is a little bit of a disagreement between us and them on that. Amy have an ageing workforce profile and we think they should be able to accommodate 14. And actually, it's looking at the range of skills that Amy do employ in Sheffield. It isn't always the manual trades, there's a lot of back office planning, there's a lot of statistician work. There's a lot of opportunities for other apprentices to be brought into the business. So that has been an ongoing dialogue between us, I just wanted to put that as a matter on record. In terms of quality, when Pete joined the contract, he brought a new emphasis to quality of delivery in slightly before my time, but we've seen the benefit of that. In terms of the additional surfacing work that's happening this year, there are outside hours on it. So as I mentioned before, the counter holds a contract with the SPV. The SP have got external technical advisers who are going out on the ground and checking that work. Because we didn't want to be sacrificing pace to recover contract compliance against quality. And the point is, Amy are absolutely on the hook for it anyway because if it fails again, they'll have to go back out. So there are some rounded squares in that.
Okay, are you happy, Mark? Just wanted to come back on anything?
Yeah, if I could pick up on something you said there that I was quite pleased to hear about, sending, recruiting from parts of our community that may not otherwise think of working for you. And I know this is kind of going back to the rubbish element. From looking at the information...
And I know this is kind of going back to the rubbish element, from looking at the information that's on there. Um, two thirds of the city's fly tip in reported elements come from three local area committees. Um, uh, north, east, east and central, I think. Um, and I know this is kind of a deviation from the, the hard infrastructure elements of the roads and such like, but I can't help but think that one of the lessons we learnt with the street trees is you get people who are interested in the street trees to come and work with them. People in those local areas, um, who have to put up with the litter and the poor road structures and, and, and potholes and everything else are the best people to be dealing with because they'll be seen on a daily basis. Um, so I, I do think something really has to be done to make sure that we recruit from those areas and that may also then not really give you a better age profile. Or may, or may also give you a better demographic profile because I'm not sure how, how, um, your workforce currently represents the uh, diversity of the city in that respect, because obviously if you've got a lot of older aging males uh, within the workforce, there's nothing wrong. I'm an old aging male myself, I need a job. Um, I, I, I would like to still work and not be put out to pasture just yet. But there are lots of young kids who may want to be come through. And I can't help but think that when we've got people embedded within the community doing these jobs, it means that the community better understands what's going on and we can better communicate and we can start to, as you rightly said, pick up on the pride element. So, so, uh, there's, there's words there that I, I, I'm liking to hear. It's just knowing whether that's going to be delivered going forward and it, it feels like something we should go back to for sure.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mark. There, there is, there is information on, on, on diversity on page sixty on diversity workforce, so do have a look at that. Do you want to come back on?
I, I, I just, just like to share that in, in the last eight months, we've introduced to the business a programme called Journey to Work. Um, we haven't rolled it out in Sheffield, but I would like to see it rolled out in Sheffield. And, and it targets, um, particular areas where people usually wouldn't consider getting into our industry. Um, we do it with our supply chain as well, so it's not just come and get a job with AMI, it's get a job in our industry. We typically work with the clients who have the, 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 the reach into the areas where there is, you know, a, a shortage of opportunities. And I hold open days where we give, uh, experience on writing CVs, interviews and, and show people what the opportunities are. So, you know, perhaps that's something we should, you know, work with Sheffield and actually do a journey to work programme here. Um, and you know, I might find that there's roles in Sheffield that we can also, um, market at the event. So that's one that we can take away.
Thank you. And before I bring the next question in, I've got Mike and Alex coming up. I just wanted to follow up the point on, on surface dressing that, that Mark raised. Um, certainly during the core investment phase, towards the end of it, I think we started to use service dressing on, on, on a lot of roads that people were expecting the, 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 what they'd seen. And certainly when it's first down, it's not, it's not as attractive. Obviously it improves over time. Um, but one thing was, I, I, it happened in, in Tottenley in my award, it probably happened in other people's awards as well. One thing, I think we were told at the time is, okay, you're getting this, this time, but next time that road he's doing is going to get a, um, he's going to get the treatment you've seen elsewhere, he's, he's getting the full works. Is that, is that still the, I suppose it's not a, a hard and fast rule, but is that still the intention or the policy?
Um, not necessarily. It's the condition scoring data that, that drives our asset management strategy. So, um, there could well be roads out on the network, um, that, um, that actually, that we inherited and might never need a treatment because they never fail that condition score. It's probably unlikely in twenty five years, but, um, it, it may well be, depending on if that street failed again on a surface defect, it, it may be the most appropriate to, um, treatment to receive another one because it's a surface defect rather than a structural defect. So it depends what the failure type is driven by the performance requirements in the contract to the condition scoring as to what those treatments will be.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, Andy, for the, uh, for the presentation. Um, and helping to make things clearer in, because basically we, we only had the black and white document, so seeing the coloured pictures was, um, was certainly helpful for my eyes. Um, I just want to take us back to the, to the quality of service and there, there's almost a, an inference that if, if Sheffield City Council had agreed the original, um, improvement plan back at the start of last year, then you would be on target. But I mean, I've, I've got concerns because you would have been dealing and negotiating with officers um, to, in putting that plan together. And I would have thought that would have helped make sure that it got through the city council, rather than have to go back to the drawing board that have slippage and, uh, not.
So, so initially when we submitted our annual investment programme, all the defects, um, that were flagged from the contract fails were put forward in a programme, but, um, over a three year period. Um, that, that's what our proposal was at the time and, and through discussion with the authority and, and further scrutiny of the contract, actually those should have been delivered in that year one of that programme. So that's what that, that change was at the time.
I think, I think it's fair to say there was a delay getting on the ground, but it wasn't significant. And it resulted in the right thing being done. So, you know, I, I don't want anybody to think that the rejected plan, um, deferred work or lost work. It did mean we had a lot to catch up and, and, you know, we are catching up. I think the data shows you that.
Thank, thank you for that answer. Um, the other thing I wanted to tease out was that there's also, there's also a suggestion um, in what, in what you were putting across that if, I'm going to phrase this right. It's alluded me, Joe. I, I do, I do apologise, but. Go to someone else.
Do you want to come back later, Mike? Yeah, okay. Um, Alexi?
Yes. Uh, thanks very much for bringing the report today and the presentation. That was really useful. Um, so I've got a few questions. Uh, we've heard a lot about the core contracts and compliance of the core contract. Uh, but there have also been a number of other schemes, um, for example, the Sheep Valley cycle route uh, and active travel neighbourhoods in the city, uh, where there have been delays in implementation um, and delivery of those. And I suppose my question is about, um, has that uh, impacted your ability to, um, achieve compliance for the core contract work? And is there any, uh, scope for, um, those non-core contract work to be taken, um, outside AMI? Uh, in order to help with compliance with the contract? That's the first question.
So the, the, um, a resource that's dedicated to the core contract performance requirements is, is ring fenced to core contract. And we have a separate team that delivers non-core works there. And the non-core works are the uh, further additional improvement schemes to the network. So they are two distinct different teams, all housed, uh, within, uh, AMI locally at Pollock Grove Road. But they are two independent resources. So one, um, shortfall on core contract, it, um, isn't as a, a result of, um, any reliance on that team in non-core, if, if that was your initial question.
So there's no impact on capacity if there is additional things going on in the city that bring, that asks on your?
No, where, where, uh, any increase in programme, um, for non-core works, uh, specifically a resource, don't we have a, a resource plan? Also to, to increase that workload as a, as the spend profile is increasing, um, due to the council's five year funding from, um, the city region.
Okay, so, um, would that be a question for a different time to talk about, uh, any delays, um, in implementation of the, the active travel routes and Sheep Valley cycle route?
Chair, can I add that that's probably the Transport Committee? Because whilst AMI deliver it, they commission and, um, oversee those projects.
Thanks very much. Um, I've, well, due to the, the weather that we've just had, we've had a lot of constituents getting in touch about, uh, gritting. Um, and specifically certain gritting on pavements and, uh, cycle routes that's not part. Is there any scope within the contract to prioritise some of those, uh, reprioritise? Um, I mean, because it's had an impact on people getting injured, for example, uh, and also impacted the waste contracts with, um, bins not being able to collect it due to icy conditions on some pavements. Um, and is that something that we can think about within the contract? Um, to make sure that, for example, cycle routes are safe and people can get their bins out and use the pavements more safely?
Chair, I, I'll pick that one up because it's, it's a policy point. Um, so at the moment, we have one of the highest precautionary gritting networks in the country of any local authority. Um, so we do do a lot in terms of roads and we have one of the highest numbers of grit bins as a local authority as well, reflecting our, uh, hills. Um, in terms of, uh, cycle ways, um, that's become an increasing ask as we've seen more people move to active travel. Um, we are in discussion with colleagues in transport about what could that look like? There's no way we're ever going to be able to grit the whole cycle network. So what would our priorities be and how do we do that safely? Because once, once we have provided a gritted route, we take on a liability for, for kind of a safe passage. So we need to be sure whatever we do gets us to a standard that is safe for, for people using it. Um, so we are talking to and, and trying to understand what we might be able to do with highways colleagues on that at the moment. The key issue will be funding. How do we intend to fund it? Because it is going to need more resource and more vehicles, more specialist vehicles and probably more, um, labour intensive vehicles, you know, the, the, the trucks that go around the city can cover quite an area at one time. These are going to be much dinkier, got in on cycle ways and so going to have much more limited capacity in terms of what they can do. Um, I think there might be an opportunity potentially for us to use some of the CAS money back into this, but that's something we're talking about with, with highways colleagues. Um, because that's going to be the crux of it, how do we fund it? Um, in terms of AMI support over the past sort of periods, um, kept the network running. Um, really well, I think, you know, we've had very few sort of comments back on that. They also deployed additional resource to Stannington because we had that pressure from Caden. Um, and they did respond when we got the list of priority roads from, from Bioli to access. It, it just is the factor of us having prolonged icy conditions and cold temperatures that when, when the sun just wasn't getting on the streets, nothing was shifting it. So, uh, we should, we should be able to recover all the bins by the close of payday today.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Joe. Okay, I, I do, I do understand that transport are looking at whether the, some funding for gritting can be in scope in some of the project funding they have for, for new cycle routes in the first place, but that, obviously that's not going to cover existing cycle routes. Um, but I, I was going to say raise it with, with transport, um, and that one of the co-chairs of transport was in the room, but she seems to have left, so. Um, yeah, go, go, go and find where she's gone and, and raise that with her, raise that there. Um, uh, Cliff?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, yeah, thank you very much for, 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 for the report. It's, it's very, 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 very helpful. Um, I'd like to ask a little bit about sort of pre- preemptive work, um, on, on the highways. Um, typical example, um, porter, some potholes. Some of them are dangerous, some of them less so. Um, someone comes along, fills the, so the, the bad ones and, and leaves the, um, not such bad ones, um, for, for, to be done later. Inevitably, they deteriorate and they become dangerous in turn. Um, can, can I ask, you know, what's the process? What's the thinking behind the way things are done? Um, you know, it just seems easy that if, 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 if you've got half a dozen potholes, two of them are dangerous, just do the lot of them. I mean, you know, it's one journey, cheaper, quicker for everybody. Wh- wh- why doesn't that happen?
So, um, a lot of this underpins our overarching asset management strategy. So, um, the forward programme of, um, resurfacing is planned. In between those, um, sections of failures, there inevitably will be what we call cat one, uh, category one defects and category two defects. So category one are, um, safety critical and we get a certain response time to, uh, to repair those. And, uh, there is an element of make safe, so it would be a temporary repair and that's followed up by a permanent repair. So all these are scheduled and regularly logged and come in and then a category one defect or, or two defect can cover the carriageway, footways, paved areas, curbs, uh, the, the, the whole lot. So, um, those are then scheduled, um, to the crews on a, on a daily basis. So, um, some of those are, are logged back in time and when they turn up on that road, there, there might be two in their programme to do. But there might be three visible on the street, but unless they move on and do the planned, planned works, that, that they'll never move on and, uh, complete the whole programme. Um, so, so there, there can be cases where, um, they're dealt with, uh, in priority order because that's the programme driving that sequence. But also you will see as well that some defects out on the network are from utilities and they also do temporary repairs and, um, they could, they, the quality of those, we, whilst we do, um, monitor the overarching safety of those, um, there's a longer period of time before they have to do a permanent repair. Um, and, uh, so you, so you will see some of those relating to utilities repairs.
That, that, thank you. I've, that's an, another question if I, if I may, Chair. Again, it's kind of preemptive work. Um, it's to, it's to do with, um, leaf clearance and cleaning of gullies. I mean, some, some bits of the city must be worse than others. Um, have, have these been identified and, and, you know, do, do, do you give more attention to certain areas of the city than, than, than others becau- because of the, where the, the way the trees are and, and, and such like?
Yes, that, that's correct. Um, I mean, obviously we've been, uh, maintaining this contract for, for ten years. So there's quite a lot of intelligence around, um, the heavier tree, um, canopies around the city. So efforts in the cyclical programme for, for leaf cleansing is, is targeted, um, around that. That's overlaid with the knowledge of the drainage system and where we might get drainage problems as well. So, um, so we do try and prioritise some of those resources, but sometimes we're in the hands of the weather. So, um, we can't be everywhere. As, as soon as we have a storm or the wind or the rain, all of a sudden they can come down and, and, uh, you know, it's difficult to be covering that citywide in one go. So sometimes you're waiting for the, the leaves to be coming on the ground, to be quite honest, but, um, there is a, a natural cycle of, um, the heavier trees get, get, uh, areas get a more frequent visit.
Thank, thank you very much and thank you, Chair. Thank you, Cliff. Uh, Tim?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. It's been very useful. One of the things, uh, when you're talking about footways and that sort of thing and cleansing treatments, how are you coping with the, uh, not using glyphosate and how, and how is that working to make, and how, how, how is that impacting on costs of keeping, uh, footways clear, that sort of thing? And how, and you know, what sort of process have you got for that now?
So at the moment, we've undertaken a trial, um, period and so we're just involved with the local authority of, of summing up our findings, um, fr- from that trial. So we, we need some time with the teams to regroup and have a look at what, what that impact was, uh, or is. So, um, that, that's to be reviewed going forwards. I, I don't think we've got the conclusions of that as yet.
Next question, because, because one, you know, one of, one of the things where you're saying you do whole streets, whole roads, where you've been resurfacing. I've got one particular one in my ward, Lidget Hall Close, where basically there's thirty metres from the pub to the road, which is pothole strewn, et cetera, where the rest of the road's been done for quite some time now. And led to believe that, say, for instance, I mean, I don't want to get into too many specifics, but Man- when Manchester Road, for instance, is done, then the rest is going to be done. But how does that, how's that impact? Because the residents, you know, have a nice smooth road and then suddenly you've got thirty metres where it's a terrible, say, road. And I'm sure I'm not, that's not the only street that i- in, in the city, but how does, how, how, how do, how long do you leave it before you finish off a road?
So without knowing exactly where that is and the size of those areas, but, uh, the contract can drive you to, um, for, for that, if it's a thirty metre stretch of a quite considerable, um, can drive you to, for, for that, if it's a 30 metre stretch of a quite considerable road, it, it might not re, reach the overall percentage criteria that that section would fail. So depending on what type of failure it is and the area, might not drive the full section length.
Well, I mean, it hasn't failed, it just hasn't been done. I mean, where the rest has been done, if you see what I mean, that how does, you know, where, where, where do you, for instance, where do you end when you're doing a whole street? Where do you consider that to be? Because, you know, doing 80% of the street, it's not, you know, this is not a massive long road, it's just, there is an impact on residents because the last stretch, and I'm sure it's elsewhere in the city, leaving for it to be part of another scheme that may be some time later?
Yeah, again, I can't speak for the actual example, but, but previously the approach would have been to try and do the majority of the street or, I mean, obviously some, some highways are, are quite lengthy, so sections would have been targeted. But to the, to the, following the contract, it, it does drive more specific targeted sections of 50 or 100 metre lengths that, so you, so you could get examples where elements on the face of it appear to have defects, but it might not trigger the overall intervention level.
So just, so, so basically, if, if one stretch has been done and then you haven't done the other bit, then that wouldn't, because it hasn't actually been done, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be part of the, there'd be no requirement to intervene in that sort of stretch of road at all, really, apart from maybe come and fill in a bit of a pothole that's become too, too big.
So it'd always have to be maintained as safe. So as I showed you on some of those photographs, you could see that one half of the carriageway had failed and we needed to treat because the overall length was sufficient that we had to do that. But there was clearly a defect on the other side that, that doesn't trigger a failure. So we, we hadn't treated it because it hasn't failed to the contract requirement.
I think, just to be clear, the approach that we've had at CIP was to do more of the streets, for streets, and that's what we were doing. We're now moving away from that, just to target the failed sections. So we're likely to have a lot more cases where there's a individual section outside a resident's house that's done because it's failed, but the rest of the street won't be. So, you know, I just think it's worth just understanding where the future lies with this.
Okay, thanks for that. The, the other thing is, Alexi touched on it with the active travel, I didn't want to go into too much detail, but one of the things that I was, I've been consistent, because it's in my ward, told that there was discussions about the sequencing of how signage, how W L lines and road blockers were put in, to the road closures were put in. And then I was constantly being told that, that that was part, information passed on to AMI and then, and then it happened in a different order, which caused a bit of mayhem for residents. Would, would you have any comments on that?
I, I think I'm aware of the example you're talking about and I think AMI have acknowledged that we didn't issue a letter to businesses and residents appropriately at the right time.
I, I do have a couple more, Hans, I'm going to jump in now though, because I think it's thematic in response to the previous, well, last but one question. I mean, if I understood your presentation correctly, you were saying that the backlog that we, that we have, that you're working to reduce now, arose essentially because of the policy of, of doing whole streets rather than just the bits that needed doing. I mean, that, that, you know, we have, we have a problem with the condition of our roads because of your, your zeal in, in doing an excellent job. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
Yeah, you, you could look at it that way, interpret it that way, with the best intents AMI were delivering and year on year, we've looked at, we have delivered more square area than what the contract would have otherwise driven us to do. So, yeah, you know, we believe for the best intentions that we've delivered year on year and to the benefit of the overall network of Sheffield. However, there are small sections and as you can see from the presentation, 50% of those square areas anyway were cleansing issues as opposed to resurfacing issues.
Okay, so I mean, the fact that, that up until recently, whole, whole carriageways have been done, possibly parts of that sooner than necessary, means hopefully over the next few years, those will be, take longer to start failing and therefore, you know, they'll be, you know, you'll have, you'll have saved yourself some work down the road for, for having done that extra work in the past. Is that, is that another reason we should expect, you know, to return to compliance quite soon?
No, I, I think that's the case. You know, it's almost invested in the future, tackling the whole street rather than just an isolated defect. Yeah, so it's a long-term benefit for the authority.
Thank you, appreciate that. I mean, I just wanted to, well, I see we're going down this road, one example from my ward, Prospect Road, which has, a section of that has been resurfaced a number of times, I think at least three times, and is constantly being undermined by, by water and therefore, you know, there, there seems to be a drainage issue. And the residents are saying to me, look, why, why do they just come and, come and put patches down or resurface sections of it? We know there's a drainage problem, can they not do something about the drainage? And I was just thinking, given your, you know, the, the zeal we've established with which you take a long-term view of the condition of the network, does it not make sense to, to, to put some drainage in there and maybe we could, we could solve these problems in the, for the long term?
Yeah, there are some specific areas on the network that we're, we're aware of, other factors intervening with the asset strategy. A lot of these lie actually with Yorkshire Water and problems with Yorkshire Water leakages and of which you've had a few large incidences recently. But that, that's a factor that obviously we're not necessarily in control of.
Yes, I think we can all agree shape, agree to blame Yorkshire Water whenever we can. I think, I think that there are natural springs on that, on that hillside as well on Prospect Road, but okay, I will move on. So I've got second, second chances for a couple of people that Paul has indicated, but I'll, I'll come back to you in a moment. Mike?
Thank, thank you, Chair. My, my question was about the, the point system. You seem to be indicating that you, you've fallen foul of the, the point system, even though generally you were performing above and beyond what the, the targets set, but because you're, you're not hitting the right targets or the right, the ones that would stop you triggering the points. It, it means that it, it looks as though you are performing worse than you actually are. Is, is that a fair summary or have I missed something there?
I think the contract is very onus. You know, it, it, it does pose a huge burden on us with the points. The performance in the Sheffield network is good. You know, the data shows the performance of the Sheffield network is very good, but specifically against the performance criteria set out in the contract, there are areas where we are underperforming. So, yeah, I think that's a fair surmise.
So if, if that's the case, then wouldn't, wouldn't it make sense to, to perform a little bit better so that you're not incurring financial penalties? Because that's taking money away from you and giving that to Sheffield City Council.
And that's what we're doing. You know, that's why we're investing in the last eight months with this improvement plan, investing heavily on additional resources. It's not just resources that we allocated, it's additional resources as part of this improvement plan to try and address these performance deductions.
Yeah, just to add to that, we've, we've, we're probably delivering twice the volume of work this year than we would have done in a normal annual cycle. So as Andy says, we've had to significantly increase resource to, to deliver that and make sure that we become compliant by March 23.
I think we would all welcome that, Chair.
I think, I think, I think we would. I'm going to let Paul in, since he's not had a go, and then I'll come to Mark.
Brilliant, thanks. Thanks for coming in. I've got a couple of questions that hopefully will be pretty straightforward to answer and then I've got a couple of things if we go to the, if we're going to go to the closed section. So I'll start off credit where credit's due and having a much better relationship with AMI, as time's gone on since, since a few years ago. We do request quite a lot of things from you and, and it feels actually that like we're, we're requesting less because I think, you know, you've addressed a lot of those issues. Every year I send you a list of the roads in our ward that have trees on and, you know, very clearly making a connection between the, the trees and the blocked gullies. And every year you do something that's always quite inconsistent and not always what you say you're going to do, but this year been perfect, been cleaning the leaves off the roads, you've been cleaning them up off the pavements, you've got roads booked in for cleaning the gullies, like just really, you know, appreciate that. And I'll also say that our local area officer manager, Christine, is excellent and he's been really good for us and he really helped us out a lot and he'll come out and meet us and, you know, just so really good and I wanted to acknowledge that and thank you for that.
Can I just thank you for that? It's good to get positive comment back and that's what we'd like to replicate in other area committees with those individuals. So, you know, I'll take that away.
Great, thanks. So I've got questions on a few points that I said that hopefully will be relatively straightforward. So I'm looking, the first point is the, the fleet carbon produced. Now, I mean, I, I, I think that looks quite high, but I'd see, I know that you've got 100 odd vehicles. So the, the 39 vehicles that, that won't be compliant with the Clean Air Zone are the plans to upgrade them by, you know, next year sometime. Do you have any carbon reduction targets? And I, I still see an issue of, of your workers idling their engines when they're not moving.
Yeah, just to touch on your first point, the, the, the carbon output that you've seen there includes all of our activities associated with the whole PFI. And that is not just vehicles and fuel, it's also the resurfacing, the, the cost of the carbon associated with resurfacing treatments and all manner of things. And that, that actually is the, the larger proportion of the carbon output there. So just, just to make a point that that's, the whole of the PFI is carbon output.
I mean, I, I, it, it does say fleet carbon, but I, I would dread to think what the carbon footprint of resurfacing Sheffield's road must be. So are you, do you have carbon reduction targets?
As a business as a whole, yes. Got some quite challenging ones. Be worth spending probably a, a session similar to this, sharing with you what we are doing as a business. For example, our domestic fleet policy, where we have people with, I myself travel a lot in company cars, as of January, will only be able to procure electric vehicles. There is a, a, a time lag with these and we're not replacing all vehicles in January for electric. And that's unfeasible, unrealistic. As vehicles come to the end of their lease, we will be changing them for lower carbon vehicles. Now with the heavy goods vehicles and the larger vehicles, the options are quite limited at the moment. There is the likes of HVO, which is quite a contentious topic for, for anybody that knows anything about the, the, the HVO and where it comes from. But as a business, yes, we have plans in place, we have measurements on each account. You, you mentioned idling, you know, we use a system called Master Nought, which tracks all the vehicles, the drivers' behaviours, how they drive, how they brake, how they corner, how much time is spent idling and it produces a monthly dashboard, which each contract, each account monitor and report on. So I'm disappointed you're finding idling out there. I think it's a dated industry practice where people like a nice warm cab to climb back into, but it's a practice we need to stop. Modern vehicles come with heating that you can have, keep them, the cab warm so when they come back into it, you know, don't have to have the vehicle idling. Retrospectively fitting that, we've done that on some of our fleet, it hasn't worked particularly well, it's not particularly effective. So yes, we have plans, we haven't got a, a silver bullet here that will solve all the issues, but as the vehicle gets replaced, they'll get replaced with low carbon, some we might choose to replace early because they could be, you know, quite poor, but generally it's on a replacement basis.
Thank you. Moving on then, diversity of, I think, ethnicity on a different page. Yeah, I mean, you know, there's maybe a little bit of the popcorn in the kettle black because, you know, as, as councillors, we tend to be mostly white and, and mostly male. But I can see, you know. All right. But al, but also, you know, I mean, I could look at your entourage to see that you have the same kind of problems and, and the graphs back that up as well. So what are you doing to have a, a, a workforce that reflects the diversity of the city?
Yeah, so we, we're very aware of this issue, as you can see from the stats and overlaid on some of those are our, our new company targets with ethnic origin and gender specifically. So, so we have been set targets by, by our CEO to, to address this. And we've recently got much more emphasis on internal recruitment officers to help us on that journey. And what we're doing also in conjunction with Sheffield Council, we previously, I would say, haven't been great at advertising our vacancies and targeting specific areas within the Sheffield region. And that's what we're doing lately, we're tapping into the council's experience of reaching a, a lot wider ethnic groups. And for the last few vacancies, where we're specifically targeting back to back with, with our Sheffield approach this, so we're, we're learning all the time and how best to develop this. But we are certainly very aware of those statistics that we have and we are doing something about that in terms of widening our approach and targeting specific areas for recruitment.
Can I just, just add to that? It's difficult, but it's achievable. If I look at our strategic highways, leadership teams on three very large accounts, they're gender balanced, 50/50, so it is achievable. You know, and that's what we should be aspiring to on all accounts. The frustration that I have is when it comes to frontline, we typically think, you know, that the standard operative looks like this and we don't particularly welcome diversity to the frontline staff. And if you look at the facilities we've got, you know, how many female changing facilities do we have on our operational frontline premises? How many female showers do we have? And we get really frustrated when we see that, you know, we have a female operative, we finally bring one into the business and think fantastic, we're starting to make headway and we expect them to use a disabled toilet because we don't have a female toilets. You know, it's, it's, it's not good. With the investment in Olive Grove, which you, you're probably aware of, and, you know, the replacement of the facilities at Olive Grove, which quite frankly are horrendous, we're going to make sure that we've got sufficient facilities to make it an attractive environment for people from a different background. And, you know, if, if you don't create the right environment, we're never going to attract people into this industry.
Yeah, that's, that's good to hear. And also, you know, having, having the people that, people have a, have a tendency to employ people who look like themselves, you know, so trying to get some diversity in the, in those management roles, really important. Okay, I'll move on then. So appreciate that your communications improved lots, you know, the newsletters and things and that, that's really good and really helpful. I still don't always receive responses to emails. I, I, I always receive that we have received your email and then I'll normally get one a few days later saying, in this case, we couldn't answer your email within seven days and so on. And sometimes it's actually, I'll, I'll request something from you and by the time you've answered me, you know, you did it three weeks before and I'll be saying, don't worry about it, you've already fixed it. So, so I would say that, that, that could improve. And the other thing that we've had issues with probably over the last year is the emptying of street bins, where not always consistent. And, and we've had cases where... perhaps bins that are on footpath that are not next to the road tend to get ignored. We also, we have, there was one specific bin, excuse me if this is an outlier, where it had not been emptied in about a month, but on your records, it had been emptied every week. Or even twice a week, I think it was supposed to be where, you know, so whether that was an admin error or, you know, rogue operative, I don't know why, but, you know. Yeah.
Yeah, certainly on the communications, but we are working on an improvement plan as well with the authority in terms of minimizing those generic responses. A lot of those are driven by a performance requirement in the contract that we need to make an acknowledgement. In a lot of cases, we can't respond with a full and final answer within that timescale that the contract sets us. So we do need to offer up a holding response. But what we're working on is actually, we need to put a holding response in, but state a specific reason why, rather than just a generic holding response. Quite often we wait for third parties or other people before we can give a final view or an answer. But we are working on that to improve that.
Street bins? Any work on streets? Sorry, Joe, there's just a lot to discuss in.
Again, we are looking at trying to improve and gather more intelligence around street bins. But, I mean, there may well be a case where we have a rogue piece of data or a rogue operative that might not have completed their rounds. And we are looking to improve that quality drive in terms of ensuring that we meet our performance requirements on the cleansing matters. But occasionally we do get issues from third party and trade waste in certain bins. And I think we need more collective collaboration on some enforcement issues around those known areas.
Thanks very much, thanks, Chair. Thanks, Paul. So you have questions you'd like to ask in closed session, is that right? Yeah, okay, we'll come to that, we'll come to that in a bit. I'm conscious of time and we are going to probably have to extend the meeting in order, in order to reach the final item on the agenda. If members are happy with that. I do think it is worth spending the time on this, given the importance of the service to the city and the amount of money we're spending on it. So I think it's certainly worth, you know, an extra half hour of our time if that's what it takes. But bearing in mind time, I hope we can focus on the issue of performance to the contract and not go into more general questions about, about, you know, what the contract is and how it's meant to work. Having said that, I don't know, can you possibly, Jill, just enlighten us what the service level is for street bins? Generally, they're supposed to be emptied on frequency and if full, is that right?
Depends where it is. I've got my expert over here, I think there's like four or five different measures for street bins. Like the city centre, it's literally hourly. And then district centres are a couple of hours. And then there's some that might be daily and there's some that might be weekly and there might be non-request. So there are variations of where that street bin is.
Okay, so put it another way, is it worth people reporting bins they see to be full? And how do they do that?
It's something we've included in the customer charter. So when you report a street bin, there is a timeframe and we've used the longest period of when a bin has to be emptied after being reported. Yes, if that makes sense, that's in the customer charter and Amy performing well on that over 90%.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mark for his second question, then I have another question and then I'm proposing to move to a closed session. Mark.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, going back to the work programme behind, I guess for us, it would be something to look back at what's going on and what happened to the smart cities technologies with regards to street bins and everything else. But that can go for another time. Something that I wanted to understand in terms of the strategy of the contract. The AMI contracts mostly are like with like, so you're going to maintain the roads as they are. However, it was the Stannington question that prompted this for me. And there was the heavy downpour in October, November time last year, I think it was, when it absolutely tipped it down. And I remember coming into the city centre on that day and seeing gushing water spouting out of the road on Middlewood Road and such like. And had reports from others where obviously the water had overwhelmed the drainage facilities within our old Dickensian Edwardian Victorian, whatever it is sewer system. And I'm really, really mindful that part of the climate change thing within the council, we're expecting, say, our rivers to carry 30% more increase in water. And to plan for that. Maintaining the roads like for like, this is the bit that I need to get my head around at the moment. Does that mean future proofing the roads? We heard about sustainable urban drainage systems where we're putting in place mitigations. That would be maintaining the road appropriate to the environment in which we now find ourselves, not the environment where you sign the contract. Also renewing those drainage systems will mean increasing the capacity of those drainage systems, not just merely keeping them as they are. But I don't know where the contract falls on that. So understanding that element would be really, really helpful. And certainly when it comes to redoing roads and doing not just surface treatments, but deeper treatments, how are we going to start improving the drainage in the roads or are we not going to do that at all?
Yeah, so we've got to remember that the PFI contract is a maintenance contract largely. So the core investment programme was for resurfacing of roads and footpaths, LED replacement, and then a maintenance of. The contract requirements for drainage are to maintain existing. There are no improvement targets within that. So but if we get a non-core improvement scheme, then the drainage locally for that scheme may be part of an upgrade to current standard or future standards. But the existing, as you say, aging network is a problem to us in terms of the number of repairs and fixes that we have to do. But there's no obligation in this contract to upgrade and improve capacity, for example.
Just briefly coming back on that. Obviously, from what you're saying, there's no obligation to improve it. But financially for you as the risk carriers, would it not be cheaper at times to improve it? Because if you're, every time we get a downpour and the road lifts and you've got to go out and fix it. And we get the reputational damage as a council of bloody roads, they're failing again. You get the reputational damage of it was shoddy work because look, the road lifted. Where's that balance at the moment and where's that balancing your thinking in terms of, does it not become worthwhile an investment for you to save you money?
We haven't looked at it wholesale, but I don't think that would be financially viable for us to take that approach.
Thank you. I would say that I do recall at the beginning of the contract, a culvert was repaired that prevented flooding to the houses on Aberdell Road South. And we're most grateful that that happened. The culvert was in a failed state before the contract started. So, you know, I'd count that as an improvement, even though, you know, obviously it was meant to be there. It was meant to be there, but it wasn't working and the houses were getting flooded. And it was a huge piece of work. I'm sure that a lot of money went into that, into that piece of work. So we're very glad to have had that in on Aberdell Road South. So yeah, my final question for the open session. It was put to me, the street tree inquiry, that, you know, were we doing enough to support the street tree partnership? And I think the question was also raised, you know, so I'm not putting that, this to you as well, in that you need to do more, we don't, because I think we need to do more, or that was put to us that we needed to do more. That the partnership also needs more support from AMI in terms of the work that it's doing. I mean, you will be aware that the partnership has the job of kind of resolving what was a, you know, moving forward from what was a very polarised and bitter dispute in the city. That caused us an awful lot of reputational damage. So, you know, all power to their elbow as far as they're able to do that. And so can I put to you, is there more you could be doing to support that, the work of that partnership?
We're fully committed to supporting the partnership and to date on those outstanding CIP streets with trees. We have inputted significantly. We have offered up alternate designs. I think the issue is agreeing the way forward with the partnership. So we, as AMI, we can't keep doing a design for everybody. We need to get an agreement on what the solution is and then we're waiting to press on with that.
Okay, thank you. Can we then move into closed session? So can you first stop the webcast, please? And welcome back. So we've, obviously we've had some questions in closed session dealing with confidential matters, but we are still on the item dealing with the AMI performance report. I have some final comments to make. I don't know if anybody else has has final comments? No, okay. So so thank you for coming. I think it's been a really interesting session. I think, I hope you, I hope you're impressed by how much, you know, how much this service means to us as a city, obviously how much we are paying for it. When this contract was first mooted, it was described as a Ferrari compared to whatever we had before or a Lard or something, I don't know. And I still think it's a Ferrari. It's possibly just a Ferrari that's had some mechanical issues and, you know, has, you know, an expensive maintenance bill or something. But it is still a Ferrari and, you know, you are doing an awful lot of work for us, not just on the surfacing of the highways, but all the other bits and pieces. So thank you for that. And I, you know, I hope, you know, we welcome the plan to come back up to standard. It does seem to be progressing satisfactorily, so that's really very reassuring. We look forward to being fully, fully back up to standard in the near future. And I hope that we can continue having a, you know, a positive working relationship over the coming years.
Okay, can I just start, finish where I started, which is thanking you for the invite today. From my perspective, it is so much better to see people and speak to people face to face rather than by email or formal correspondence. So, you know, please, in the future, if there is anything that the committee wants to discuss with Amy, don't hesitate to ask again because I think there's a lot of benefits in having discussions of this nature. Thank you.
Thank you. So we now move on to the recommendations and I'm advised, we have some legal advice we should hear in closed sessions. So I'm going to have to close the meeting again. Apologies, everybody who was watching, waiting for that moment, but we're going to close again. I hope to be back with you soon. Thank you. Hello and welcome back. Sorry for that, it took a little longer than it might have done. So we're still on item nine, the AMI performance review. And we're just, we're just about to consider the recommendations. So the recommendations before us are to note the details of performance update, to note the new street scene and waste customer charter, to agree the actions set out in the report, including tracking delivery of the improvement plan against contract compliance, and to receive a further update on AMI performance in six months' time. Now, I'm aware there are some concerns over some of these recommendations. Does anybody want to make a proposal not that is anything other than to agree those recommendations? Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Because a lot of the information came to us late, I'm not entirely convinced that we were able to put sufficient questions to AMI over the work that they proposed to do, because I think it was, it was very difficult to digest and to formulate the right questions. I heard what Amy was saying, that they do intend to do a lot of work to bring their service levels back up to a decent standard so that they're not incurring penalties. But because of the position we were put in, our group are not minded to support item one and we're not minded to support item three. But we understand no doubt that officers will do their part in continuing to monitor and track the work of AMI. And we look forward to, our group look forward to receiving a further update on AMI performance in the next, in six months' time, which is point four.
Any other comments on that?
Would it be possible to bring this element back in January just to make sure that progress is continually to happen? So then we can follow through and with the full support of that. Because part of the issue is, is that the confidence is to, will AMI deliver? Can they turn it around? Are they continuing to turn it around? Have they just been working their socks off to get to this point so then they get six months' respite? It's just actually having a bit more scrutiny and oversight as to delivery. So could we bring this back in January?
Yes, I mean, Paul, did you ever hand up?
Sorry, that was what I was thinking, that might be a halfway point where we can pass the recommendations, but with a reduced timeframe, as Mark described, I think.
We're right, you were saying instead of six months, you want them to come back next month. Right, but otherwise agree the recommendations?
Agreed to, agreed to and four.
Subject to the increase, the performance improvement being continued.
Just so we're clear for the members of the public, I think we've got two different proposals. So I think we've got a proposal from councillor Mike Chaplin that we, or that the committee accepts, agrees recommendations two and four, but defers a decision on items one and three, with a view to considering those at an extraordinary meeting in January. I think that's the proposal. I'm not clear if that was effectively the same proposal being made by councillor Mark Jones or whether the proposal from councillor Jones is that the committee agree all of the recommendations, but with an amendment to recommendation four, that a further update is provided at an extraordinary meeting in January. Can I just clarify?
No, it's in addition to what councillor Chaplin said, but with the one month review to come in. So that subject to sufficient progress being made, we can then vote to accept.
I'm a little uncomfortable in replacing an officer recommendation for an update in six months with one saying we want that in one month. I don't think we can do that, can we?
I think, Chair, if we were asking for an update in one month, you're then asking officers to produce a new report. I think if you're deferring, you're asking for, to defer this decision for the committee to spend more time digesting the material in this report. That's not to say that officers couldn't then come back with some further information, perhaps a verbal update. But I think there's a difference between an update in a month's time and deferring this item.
Right, so I think where that's at, yeah, so I'm not clear where councillor Jones's proposal stands. I think councillor Chaplin's proposal is clear, but I would want us to be clear why we were doing that. I don't know if, I don't know if there's a, we have the opportunity of adding a bit, a piece of narrative to that decision, not to defer those to say, well, look, we just, you know, we've not had, you know, we've not had time to digest the information and, you know, we do, we do want AMI to proceed with their improvement plan. Because I think clearly we do, don't we? Is that, that's not, that's not a dispute.
That's not in dispute, Chair.
Right, because that is.
But it does come back to the, to members who are ultimately the decision makers, having timely information.
No, I appreciate that, I appreciate that. We, there were problems with the papers, which obviously has caused some of these concerns. Tim?
Yeah, my concern about one month, I can't see, I can understand the deferral, yeah, I can understand that. But I can't see how with basically two weeks for Christmas and then a meeting at some point in January, how are we going to get any improved information or any relevant information from AMI as an update from that period? I can't see how it, what are we going to get out of them in four weeks, potentially four weeks' time than we get into it? With two weeks of it being Christmas, you know, what are we judging on? I can see, I can understand the deferral of one and three. I can see where that's coming from, but I can't see how we can get enough information in that short period of time with Christmas and the New Year intervening.
Chair, could we get an update after three months? Chair, could we get an update after three months? That would clarify whether we're on track or not.
Sorry, can we, it was Alexi next and then I'll see what.
Well, just if we're going to defer the, the whole thing for one month because of not having the papers in time, I propose that we just defer that, all those recommendations for one month. And I don't know, just, just on the basis of not having the information in time. I don't really see any value in having, in keep the six months' recommendation.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think, I think we're not, I don't want to take proposals to amend recommendations that are in front of us. We can, we can accept them or not, that is my, my understanding of proper procedure. I, you know, I, I, yeah. Richard, yes?
Thanks Chair. I think just coming back to councillor Huggins' point, it's the only change would be Amy's closed report graphs. That would be the only update we'd be able to give in, in January, which is obviously improving.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think members are not asking for more information, they're asking for time to consider the information they have. Look, I'm also conscious of time, we're going to have to extend by another final half hour and members agree to do that, we do have another item to consider. I suggest we, 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 we put these items to a, to a vote. I think the proposal, I, you know, I, I would be happy, conscious of the fact that I've, I've had more opportunity to digest some of this, to agree the recommendations as they are, but I, I, you know, I, I'm conscious that members haven't. So there's a proposal to defer items two and, sorry, one and three to January. Is that, is that a fair statement of your proposal? Mike, okay. Is there a second? Is there a second for that? Okay. Can I see those in, those in favour of that deferral? And those against? All right, so, so, okay, so items, that is items, one and three are deferred until January for, to give members more time to consider the, the information they've had. Are we happy to approve recommendations two and four? Can I see all those in favour? Yeah. And those against? Okay, thank you. So two recommendations, two and four are agreed and one of the three have been deferred until January, which will have to be an extraordinary meeting. Thank you for that. Thank you everybody for, you know, your contributions to that item. It was, it was a little bit difficult, wasn't it? We have one final item. Steve Wonyer, can you come to the table and, and speak to it? Thank you. And we have, we only have half an hour for this before the strict limit falls. Hi Steve, please introduce yourself and the report, thank you.
Hi Chair, good afternoon councillors, or good evening nearly. My name's Steve Wonyer, I'm a lead officer for several projects including street food market and street trading. And this is the second of three reports that I've been bringing to the committee. You want me to continue on to the report? Yep, I will try to be brief. Obviously the purpose of the report is to introduce a new street food market licensing initiative. We certainly feel that there's, set out in one, paragraph 1.2, enough information and enough reason to, to really approve this. We want to work in partnership with local businesses and, and it's shown around the UK nationally and regionally that there's a recipe for success in this initiative. There's lots of, what you would say the street food movement set out in 1.2.5 that's become well established globally as well as in the UK and it's, it's really an exciting development. It'll give us a chance to sort of reflect cuisine for, for the people of Sheffield on the street and it'll reflect the diversity that we have as a city as well. The challenge for us therefore is to find a way sustainably to operate an high quality street food regime in the, in the central core, which can add vitality and viability to the street scene. It will hopefully draw, draw more people into the city and crucially, it will increase their dwell time and spend more time in the city. Such an offer will play a vital role in closing the gap between daytime and nighttime. One of the other projects I'm working on is about how we can develop that nighttime economy and we have that gap between 5pm and 8pm. It'll offer those who work in the city centre an attractive culinary offer and also hopefully attract families into the city centre for that early evening where we can create that sort of Mediterranean feel and people can have a bite to eat and relax and potentially listen to some nice relaxing music or theatre, on-street theatre etc. I set out in bullet points some of the stuff that will, will be a benefit of this, it'll create a consistent business opportunity for traders. I'm not going to go through all of those Chair, but I think it really spells out there how, how good this proposal can be if we can push it forward. Set out at 1.3 Chair is the proposal that we offer, propose to offer under the market's designation, all of the city centre inside the inner ring road is designated a market. This will include providing opportunity and availability for individual businesses and/or groups of businesses to apply for single or multi occupancy sites. These are available, they can be available on daily basis or trade can come just to trade for a day or a week or a month or annually or, or on multiple years. It will support businesses with their business and financial planning and provide a level of security to, to enable businesses to invest in upgrades. So if we can give them those five year, 10 year licences, people can change from their existing vehicles to the newer modern electric vehicles and it gives them time to business plan that and particularly the financial planning side of it. We want to support the existing street trading consent orders or we're asking to move across from one system to the other and we'd like to propose that the fees are brought in gradually over a three-year period for, for those existing traders. The council's fully aware and understanding of the difficult challenges that all businesses are facing in the current financial climate. Existing traders, I would propose also be given the same three-year period to, to comply with the new qualitative criteria and/or purchase new vehicles. At 1.4 Chair, the legislation, this is all done under the market rights, which in 1899 was transferred from the Duke of Norfolk. I won't go into all of the detail, it's quite interesting for, when you first look into it, I didn't know a lot of that information, but the process is all administered by our market service. Paragraph two Chair, how does this contribute? Well, the proposal has a potential to bring an all-new experience to the streets of Sheffield, an opportunity to work collaboratively, collaboratively with new and existing food providers. It'll hopefully provide new jobs and new business opportunities in the city and it'll take the first step, give businesses the chance to take the first step on the ladder towards setting up a new business and hopefully then moving into a more permanent premises within the city and becoming a popular dining situation for our residents and the visitors to the city. The proposal will help support the city centre vision by providing opportunities for new and small businesses. It'll also provide a place for people to eat, drink, socialise and explore and relax whilst enjoying the great outdoors which the city is proud of and a new culinary experience. It'll help to provide a new street food experience that is clean, green, safe and vibrant for all those that live, work and learn in or just visiting our city. Our aim is to make Sheffield the place to be and to increase our reputation as an outdoor city. The proposal is a small part of a wider project to also enhance the nighttime economy and early evening economy and really attract people into the city and make it not just for people to come out for, for a drink and, and to go to nightclubs, but for people to come out and just relax, to eat and probably not have a drink of alcohol, just have a coffee and a pizza and, and see some street theatre and really blend that in and make the city more continental and more inviting. Set out, set out in paragraph three Chair is details around the consultation, I'm not going into too much detail. We have consulted with the existing traders, not only as part of this report but also as part of the changing to the resolution which I reported to you back in November. We've also consulted with the big, bigger and larger businesses that we're aware that deliver this type of activity and we've consulted with the different emergency services such as the fire police and also our, our health and food hygiene service, which have all fed back into the documents that I've drafted, which you've got before, before you today and have all been amended, amended to reflect any comments. The documents attached to this report Chair, set out at 3.2 are the street food market licence regulations, that's documents attached at appendix N, sets out the regulations relating to payments, insurance, health and safety, code of practice, basically how we would expect those traders to operate. Appendix B is the actual licence document, which is the legal part of the process, so that's a legal document, that sets out all the clauses that the licence holder has to comply with. There's then the street food market licence sites and application fees set out at appendix C. And finally appendix D is the qualitative criteria where we're looking to get, improve the quality of the existing traders and also improve, improve the new businesses that are coming into the city. Paragraph four Chair, the risk analysis and implications of the decision. There's no implications for the market service, however, members should note that the comments in the financial implication section. 4.2 Chair, financial and commercial implications, set out there all the new fees and, and what we're expecting to achieve from this initiative. I won't go into detail with those. But it does set out the difference between the single traders, the multiple traders and, and sort of the mini market and sort of larger type of market and how much we're going to pay them. All those have been sent out to potential traders and to existing traders for their comments and to be fair, the feedback's been reasonably positive. I think if there's been any negative comments, it's been from the existing traders where they've asked for that phased approach to bringing the fees in. Set out 4.3 Chair is the legal implications. I won't read all that out, you've had that. 4.4 is the quality implications, the quality impact assessment is being done as part of all the three reports as, as one big process, same as the climate impact assessment where we're having discussions and as you will see from what I've said already, we're wanting to move to electric vehicles and move away from diesel generators, wanting to make it a cleaner, greener and safer environment. Has alternative options been considered? Well, not really, other than maintaining the status quo, not doing this and just keeping the street trading consents as we have them now. But in order to secure what we feel are the benefits of this report and the improvement of the city centre and the nighttime economy and making it better for our people, for the people of Sheffield, we think this is the right option. And the recommendations Chair is that moving forward with the proposals outlined in the report, will improve the on-street food trading offer across the city centre, it'll provide more opportunities for local street food trading businesses, especially those new startups and the creation of mini markets moving forward. I would also recommend Chair that if, if you're in favour of the report that you give the permission to stop publicising the initiative as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any questions? Cliff?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, can, can you explain how Christmas markets fit in with this? Because I mean, Christmas market, you're going to have a mixture of food stalls, they're only going to be there for, for a week or two and there'll be other stalls as well which aren't selling food and drink.
Yeah, the, the process will be managed via the market service, which work very closely with the city centre management team who contracts out the areas and arranges all the Christmas markets. Obviously, we're, we're very conscious of not giving conflicting permissions, so where we've got the Christmas market, if there was any markets issued on Fargate where the Christmas market is or the more, then part of that consent that would be that they can't trade during that period or if they did, then it would be via agreement with, with the Christmas market. So currently we, we do the same sort of thing, so if there's events on in the city centre, we'll talk to the event organisers, ask them if they mind if red continues trading, if they don't, then we'll allow them to trade. If, if it's a problem, then there is part, there is a clause within the licence that says we can ask them not to trade at any time, so we can stop them from trading individual days or a full week or a full month. So it, all the information's in there and we do take that into consideration, so we will discuss it with both the traders and the markets.
Okay. Is there any flexibility on, I mean, supposing someone wanted to do, well, just want to do, you know, Saturday evenings and let somebody else do the rest of the week? That, that's all possible?
Yeah, basically, yeah. You can apply for a day consent, whether that's for three hours in the day or 12 hours in the day or whether just the morning or just the evening, would be up to the applicant. So hypothetically, yes, we, we could have a crash trader that comes up until tea time but he doesn't want to work during the nights, he only wants to work night till five, then you might get another type of trader that wants to come and sit in the same location in the evenings because what, what he delivers, let's say pizza trader, may be more beneficial in the evening. So yeah, can mix and match and do all sorts of different things.
And, and they would all pay pro rata, they wouldn't pay the full annual fee?
If they're, if they're applying for a consent, the licence, whether it for one day, they would then pay that fee?
On, on a pro rata basis?
Yeah, no, I forgot what the day fee is, but, no, not pro rata, they would pay that fee because it covers.
For the fee?
Yeah, the fee is the basic administration in processing the application and, and the site and then, and very little on enforcement on a day consent.
So they'd, they'd, they'd pay the, for example, you know, two and a half thousand pounds per annum?
Oh, I, I, I thought you was talking more.
Sorry, I mean the fees, so not, not the licence.
Yeah, I thought you were talking where somebody just wanted to come and trade for a morning.
What, what I'm thinking of is a situation where, where, where someone says, I, I would love to do, you know, the Saturday evening spot or, or, or something like that. Can, can they pay a fee that reflects that time?
Yeah, that, that would be down to the staffing market service to, yeah, I thought you were just talking about a one-off in the morning, but if you're talking the same morning every week throughout the year, then yeah, we'd have to look at that and, and set the fee relevant to that so that the market staff would look at that, yeah.
Okay, and just, just one little detail, you talk about silent diesel generators, you might need to sort of specify what a silent diesel, diesel generator is, they do make a noise.
No, I'm not, the, the, the idea is that we move away from diesel generators completely, whether they're silent or not silent, I do agree with you, having done lots of events and, and concerts, they do make a noise. So yeah, the idea is that we move to electric or, or gas and move away from diesel or petrol generators. It, it, the proposal is based around being cleaner and greener. We don't want generators everywhere across the city. In fact, we want vehicles that don't run on generators. So yeah, definitely.
Thank you. I think we'll come back to generators. How are you, how are you doing Cliff? I don't want, I don't want to move on. Alexi?
Yep, Steve, thank you for the report. Yeah, it's just about somewhere to what Cliff was asking about the, the diesel generators. So it, because there is a section in the report on that, does that not require that there should have been a climate impact assessment? And if we are going to say, we're saying that there shouldn't be diesel generators where electric is, electricity is available?
On most of, yeah, on most of the sites that we're offering, electricity is available. So unless there's, it'd have to be a really good reason for us to issue a consent with a diesel generator. I, I think bearing in mind what we're looking, what, what we're aiming for is to move away from them. I think any, any new consents, we would be saying to them, look, we, we want electric. They'd have to come up with a very good argument not to do that. Obviously we've got the existing ones, I think one, there's like the ice cream vehicles, one's electric. I think one, there's like the ice cream vehicles, one's electric, he's paid a lot of money to have that moved over, one's diesel. Uh, and I believe he's committed to moving that over in the next three years. So, yeah, that's what we want to work to.
And then the other, uh, question around, um, um, uh, with litter and waste. Uh, so are we going to put anything in there to sort of incentivise not using single-use plastics? And is there scope to do that within the full policy?
Uh, I mean, the regulations talks about litter, uh, and certainly the clearance of litter. I have no problem, uh, in, including something in there and adding something around about single-use plastics and, or paper cups. I think that's a great idea. I certainly think most of the, that, that wouldn't be a problem, I don't think.
And finally, just one thing around, uh, parking, because I've noticed in the city centre, while we've got the Christmas markets out, there are people that park their cars close, presumably close to their business in places where parking wouldn't normally be allowed. So, for example, today I saw somebody parked in the Peace Gardens and.
Yeah, definitely not. Uh, again, this, this is about traders. Really, this is about, if, well, my, my view of this is about getting these sort of hand carts, uh, these barrers or things like that. We don't want vehicles that are driven on. Well, it, vehicles that are towed on or pulled on, they're parked up, the vehicle goes. Uh, it doesn't park nearby, it goes back to its depot or whatever. They, they, they do all their loading and everything before, I think it's 9am we're saying, and they do all their unloading, uh, or loading back up and clearing away at the end of the day or end of the evening, whichever they've got. But no vehicles stay on site, uh, and certainly they wouldn't be allowed to, uh, come to any parking regulations or restrictions anyway. So if they wanted to park nearby, it would have to be somewhere where they can find a legitimate parking space.
Thanks, thanks. We're, we're down to our last 10 minutes, so I'm keen to hurry this up a bit. Mike and then Janet.
Be as quick as I can, Chair. Um, on the, um, on the litter, um, that I'm grateful to Alexi for, for raising. One of, one of the advantages of being able to do this in the, in the city centre is that we do have a regular sweep, um, of gathering litter that, uh, well, and, and the litter bit, the litter bins get, get cleared regularly. If you were to apply this to areas outside of the city centre, um, and, and those colleagues have mentioned to me Spital Hill, for example, where there's quite a thriving night, nightlife trade, um, goes on and, and in, and in other parts of the city. Um, it might be less practical because there isn't the places to deposit waste after, after food containers have been used.
Certainly, I think if, if this move, if we look at this initiative and it works and we move it outside the city centre, you'd probably be looking at individual initiatives depending on the areas, because like you say, each area is different. Uh, there is a clause and a condition in the regulations that they have to take away all their own litter. So they have to clear up at the end of the day, bag it up, take it away, they have to dispose of it properly. Uh, obviously, people will put things in litter bins, we know. Uh, obviously, they might buy something and walk up the street, uh, and put it in a normal litter bin. But around the site, the trader has to clear all that up, bag it up and take it away with them at the end of the night.
Right, so if someone buys a pizza, for example, eats it within about 20, 30 yards, just discards the packet on the ground, sorry, the, the container, then it's down to the street trader to go and collect that?
Well, one, I would hope he might get a fine for littering or a, a fixed penalty notice. But yes, it'd be up to the trader to clear all that up. It's up to them to go within the vicinity and make sure that no litter's left behind, particularly, like you said, like pizza boxes, things like that, yeah.
So you have a, a defined area for this, for the, what you've just described as the vicinity?
Defined as within the vicinity, yeah.
I think you made the point, Mike. I'd like to hurry down Janet.
Okay, well, no, the other one is on the toilets. How do we see 8.14 work?
8.14 on, in the regulations?
8.35. How are we, how are we going to implement, how are we going to make this? Well, there's an expectation on the licence.
I think it's a matter for the trader. I mean, if, it, we're, we're aiming at food rather than drinks, but there, if somebody may come along with a drinks proposal, in which case they have to answer that question, don't they?
8.14 toilets?
Yeah.
Obviously, for, for a normal food trader, they wouldn't need to provide toilets, even if they're there for seven days a week, 13 hours a day, because that, that doesn't result in people wanting to use a toilet more. But if a provider is providing, which they can do, providing drinks, alcohol or pop or all that sort of things, then the, the trader has an obligation to provide facilities. Uh, therefore, they would need to look at bringing in either a temporary toilet or, or a cabin toilet sort of facility. But certainly, if you, if you look at the big, the ones that do it now, such as the Pedlar Market, they have those facilities, they have the little trailers with the toilets in. So it's up to the trader, not us as a council. So if they want to provide drink, then they need to provide the welfare facilities for their customers.
Right.
You believe it's practical to implement that?
Well, I mean, if it's not practical, it's their problem, I think, isn't it? I mean, it's not, it's not our problem. These, these are, these are conditions we can, we can enforce, you know, that's, I think that's the point. Uh, Janet?
Sorry, I don't have anything to add actually. The question was already raised then, so nothing further.
Thank you. Uh, Mark, and we've really short time here.
So I'll try and be as brief as I can. So, um, what this paper's saying is, is you're looking for permission to increase fees for city centre trading, uh, with the street food offers and street vendors offer. Make it into a market bit. Um, the, the fees are purely to cover off the costs of doing this, I guess. And have we modelled in the fact that presumably we're doing this to grow the city centre's economic resilience and capacity? As such, would we not be recognising an increase in business rates? Has that been modelled in? Has there been any way of looking of not, of, of reducing the amount of fees that we're looking to charge? Uh, because we'll get a gain sharing over economic activity through what would hopefully be a good, uh, creation of a vibrant economy?
Uh, it's, it's hard to explain. We're, we're not actually, well, hypothetically, we're not increasing the fees, they're all new fees because we're moving to a new regime. In our, in, in retrospect, obviously, the four traders or five traders that are moving across, they will see an increase. But hypothetically, the scheme itself, it's about setting new fees for a new scheme, a new initiative. We have considered, uh, how much those fees are. We're recovering the reasonable cost of the administration of processing that application. And to be fair, those fees reflect the same sort of costs as most of our licences doing the licensing department. Because as you know, I've set those fees for many years. Uh, it, it also covers the enforcement, so the markets officers going out and inspecting the sites, checking these vehicles, making sure they complain. Then the other element of the fee, uh, which is different to what you would have in the licensing world, is the site fee. Uh, we're allowed to charge the market rate for a site, uh, under markets. Whereas under licensing, you can't actually charge for the site. So you can only recover your reasonable costs of administrat, administration enforcement. Under markets, we're allowed to charge for the site as well, same as we do for a market stall, same as we do within the markets. It, it's, you're paying partly for the site that you're occupying. Uh, they don't pay, these won't pay business rates, uh, with them being of a temporary nature. Uh, so they, they potentially are better off because they will be paying probably a lower fee than what a business might be at the side. Uh, and, and you're right, it is about encouraging them. We want new businesses, we want new startups. There's a great initiative within street food trading. I don't want to dwell too long because I know the time's running out. But they work with NABMA, NAB, NMA, who are the National Markets Association. And they do apprenticeships in this sort of stuff and, and they get help and support about moving up the ladder. So it is, it definitely all about what you've just said.
If I can just answer your question as well, I mean, um, this originated in what was a, a, a BIP from, from last year's budget to, to, to raise some money. And it's, it's been over, over the time we've worked on it, I think, it's fair to say. It is no longer about squeezing the existing traders, it is about getting new, getting new and interesting things into the city centre. So, yes, there is some increase on, on, on fees in, for existing trades in the city centre. We do believe they can, you know, that those numbers, what they were originally, were probably too high. I think what we have now compares very favourably to, to other cities we, we've benchmarked against. Um, so, um, there, there is a document, which unfortunately is not in the pack, where we've looked at the, the fees in other cities. And, you know, I think, uh, I know Mike has seen that. Um, so on that basis, I think these, these numbers are reasonable. But it is a different regime and we can charge, uh, you know, a, 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 a price for the, for the value of the sites, which we couldn't do under the street, the street regime. Um, if we wanted not to do that, then maybe we should go back to Finance Sub or Full Council and say, we don't want to pursue this BIP anymore. I think, I think that that would probably be the, the course of action, which I, you know, I'm not proposing we do. Right, are there any more questions? In which case, um, any, uh, I'm, I'm minded to move straight to a decision on this. If there are, if there are no objections, are we agreed with this, this report? Thank you, that's, that's, that's all agreed. So, uh, final item which I, uh, which has been held over is the work programme. Um, I think, I, I think all we need to say is that the work programme has been modified somewhat in light of the other decisions we made today. Um, I don't think we need to say any more than that unless, no, okay. So thank you, thank you all for coming. That is the end of the meeting. Thank you all, everybody at home for watching and, uh, have a Merry Christmas.